It is five forty-six P M on Wednesday, September fourth, twenty twenty-four. I'm calling to order the Town of Rutland Select Board Meeting. We're meeting in the lower level of the Rutland Public Library at two eighty Main Street. We are starting with executive session. So before we do any of the other stuff, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session for reason number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Subject: Rutland Firefighters Union, Local forty-eight seventy-eight I A F F, to return to open session.
So moved.
Motion and second. Roll call. Harry?
Second and I.
Mattson I.
Ledger I.
Galvin I.
Waitman I. We're in executive session. It's six nineteen P M. Thank you, Austin. We are back in open session. This is the Town of Rutland Select Board Meeting, September twenty-fourth. We are on Zoom and local access cable. We're also being recorded for social media Zoom and YouTube re-airing everywhere, just so the public is aware. Let's stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge all agents.
To the flag, the United States of America. To the public for which it stands, one nation under God, even this world, liberty and justice for all.
Quickly, we have minutes, treasury warrant, and payroll. I would entertain a motion to approve treasury warrant twenty-five dash five and twenty-five dash P W five.
Make motion to approve treasury warrant twenty-five dash five and twenty-five dash P W five.
Motion and there a second? Questions, comments, concerns? Roll call. Harry?
Second and I.
Mattson I.
Ledger I.
Galvin I.
Waitman I. We have approval of the meeting minutes for my regular scheduled meeting on August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. I believe that this was the attendance. It was myself, Paul, and Tom in attendance. So I believe Jen and Harry, unless you've reviewed the recording with me to abstain. Is there a motion to approve?
Make motion to approve meeting minutes from August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, regular meetings. Ah, regular meetings, excuse me.
Second.
Motion and second. Any conversation? Roll call. Harry?
Abstain.
Mattson I.
Ledger abstain.
Galvin I.
Waitman I. And I would entertain a motion to approve the executive session meetings, minutes from February twentieth, twenty twenty-four, March fourth, twenty twenty-four, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, April first, twenty twenty-four, and August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, not to be released at this time.
So moved.
If I may, so these are the ones that the board was going to release?
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. And we need to pull out the nineteenth anyway because that was only the three of us anyway. Sorry.
Yes.
Yep. Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Um, the, um, merge fourth minutes. I think there's two. Are we separating them out? Because there's two topics.
Yes. I apologize if I kept them on the same paper. It's my intention to separate them out, so it's just the Wood Studio that we're releasing.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So I would entertain a motion to approve and release the February twentieth, March twenty, March fourth, March eighteenth, and April first meeting, executive session minutes related to the Wood Studio or Wood House conversations.
Sure.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Questions, comments, concerns?
I have a general question.
Yeah.
If we're voting to release these minutes, not approve the minutes, is my vote liable?
So the board previously approved these minutes but did not release them, so tonight you're only voting to release.
Okay.
And this is because the grant agreement was fully executed at our previous meetings, so that's.
Okay.
Motion and second. Roll call. Harry?
Second and I.
Mattson I.
Ledger I.
Galvin I.
Waitman I. And then we have the executive session meeting minutes from August nineteenth, not to be released at this time. And I believe that this is just Paul, Tom, and I. Oh, actually, we hadn't released these. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Um, yes, so to approve and release.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Conversation. This is the grant agreement with the Historical Society. Roll call. Harry? Or, yeah, roll call. Harry.
On approval, second and abstain. On release, second and yes.
Mattson I.
Ledger abstain.
Galvin I.
Waitman I. Thank you. Moving into our slightly delayed, thank you for your patience, public hearing. It is now six twenty-three. I am opening the dangerous dog hearing for Amber at eighty Hillside. Notice is hereby, I'm going to read a couple of things. Legal notice, Town of Rutland notice of hearing. Notice is hereby given under chapter one forty, section one fifty-seven of the general laws that the Rutland Select Board will hold a public hearing on September fourth, twenty twenty-four, at six ten P M in the Mattson Redfield Meeting Room in the Rutland Public Library, lower level, two eighty Main Street, and virtually for an order to show cause to determine a dangerous dog housed at eighty Hillside Road, Rutland, Mass. zero one five four three. Documentation concerning this public hearing can be inspected before the public hearing at Town Hall during normal business hours. The public may attend virtually from a computer using a Zoom link that's been provided or from a telephone and, or webinar ID. Telephone users may dial star nine to request to speak. Computer and app users may use the raise hand feature to request to speak. Rutland Select Board. Town of Rutland, dangerous, dangerousness hearing for Amber. September fourth, twenty twenty-four, six ten P M. We are starting slightly late at six twenty-three. Opening statement. This hearing is being conducted pursuant to Mass. General Law, chapter one forty, section one fifty-seven, the nuisance or dangerous dog statute. This statute gives this board the authority, upon receipt of a complaint, to determine whether a dog is dangerous, meaning that it has, A, caused injury by attacking a person or animal without justification, or B, behaves in a way that would cause a reasonable person to believe that it poses an unjustified threat of physical injury. C, the board shall hear, under oath, from all witnesses who can testify to this issue, in particular to the events that took place on August seventh, twenty twenty-four, involving Amber. D, if after the hearing, the testimony and taking any evidence, the board declares Amber a dangerous dog, it will issue an order prescribing a remedy that may include, among other options, certain restraints, muzzling, or even euthanasia, should the circumstances warrant. E, the board's decision will be memorialized in a written decision issued shortly after the hearing. Any order of this board may be appealed to the District Court. Three, review of process. The board will first hear from witnesses and receive evidence from the complaining party and victims. Then it will hear from the dog owner, individually any witnesses or evidence they may have. B, in order to provide testimony, all witnesses must be sworn under oath, given by Tamika Murphy, the board executive assistant. C, after all factual evidence is provided, the board will close the public hearing. Town Council's office will then provide a description of the legal definitions and standards that apply to the issues for determining a dangerous dog. No other information will be taken by the board after that point. D, the board will then deliberate on its determination. It may take two or more votes. One, whether the dog is a dangerous dog as defined by the statute, and two, if so, what the remedy should be to ensure public safety. That's a little bit of the outline of the process. So, moving on.
Matt and Joe?
Yes.
Hi. Hi, good evening. My name is Greg Corbo. I'm from Town Council's office at K P Law. And I'm here to assist you this evening with, with any questions that you may have. At the outset, I just wish to remind members of the board that in addition to finding that the dog is a dangerous dog, there is also a lesser finding of nuisance dog that may be found if you find the facts so justifying of that, and I can explain that to you later during your deliberations.
Thank you, Mr. Corbo, Attorney Corbo. Moving into the witnesses' testimony and evidence. I think we have here our Animal Control Officer, Jen Freiberg. I believe we have the, the residents, and I believe the dog owners and attorneys. Correct? Am I missing anyone? We can have introduction and begin hearing the, the testimony, please.
Go, go in and swear again first, will you, and speak?
Ah, sorry.
Everybody wants.
Jen, do you swear that the testimony that you give shall be the truth? The whole truth?
Sure, nothing but the truth.
Nothing but the truth will help you guard?
I do. Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Jennifer Ford. I'm the Rutland Regional Animal Control Officer, covering Rutland as well as several other communities. I think you guys have received my report on this matter, but I'm, just so that I don't miss anything in the recounting, if it's okay. It might take a couple of minutes, but I would prefer just to read it to everybody, so that everybody here is familiar with my report, and again, that I'm not skipping over things, if that's okay. All right. On August seventh, two twenty, twenty twenty-four, I, Jennifer M. Ford, received a call at approximately six forty P M while off duty from Rutland Regional Dispatch. I was informed that Laurel Lynn Waymoth of Seven Briarwood Road, Rutland, came into the lobby to file a complaint against the dogs residing at eighty Hillside Road, Rutland. Mrs. Waymoth reported she was jogging by number eighty Hillside Road when four dogs came running off the property and attacked her. At this time, I confirmed that all parties were safe and told dispatch that I would follow up with Mrs. Waymoth in the morning. I was also told Mrs. Waymoth refused medical treatment at this time. On August eighth, twenty twenty-four, I spoke to Mrs. Waymoth, who recounted the incident to me. Mrs. Waymoth stated she was jogging by number eighty Hillside Road when four dogs, two medium-sized and two small dogs, came running off the property and attacked her. She stated all four dogs were jumping at her and barking at her. She then stated a teenage girl from that residence came out and was trying to call and retrieve the dog. She was eventually successful, but the incident went on for several minutes before she was able to control them. Mrs. Waymoth stated that she was unsure if she had been bitten at that time, but she was extremely distraught and collapsed in the road. She stated she had to call her husband to come pick her up. Mrs. Waymoth was very concerned for the safety of any other citizens who may happen to walk by that address. After Mrs. Waymoth went home, she discovered that the dog in question had broken the skin, and she had a puncture wound on her left buttock. The dog that bit her is described as a medium-sized, long-haired brown dog with some white markings. After I spoke to Mrs. Waymoth, I proceeded to eighty Hillside Road and spoke to Mr. Eric Kratz. Mr. Kratz was not home at the time of the incident, but was aware that the dogs had gotten loose. Mr. Kratz was unaware that any of the dogs had broken skin and bitten Mrs. Waymoth. Mr. Kratz informed me that his teenage daughter was visiting and was unaware that the dogs had to be confined when outside. He stated that they did not normally allow the dogs to roam free. After speaking to Mr. Kratz and going by the description of Mrs. Waymoth, I discovered that the dog that bit Mrs. Waymoth is a three-year-old female Australian shepherd named Amber. Mr. Kratz stated he owns the two small dogs and his fiancee, Mrs. Damarillis, am I saying? Damarillis? Garcia Morales owns the other two dogs, including Amber. Mrs. Garcia Morales was in Puerto Rico visiting family at this time. Mr. Kratz was available to, was available to provide later that day rabies vaccinations for the two dogs he owns, the smallest two. I spoke to Mrs. Garcia Morales, and she stated that both her dogs had their rabies vaccination, but she was unable to provide proof at this time. She stated the dogs were vaccinated at the rabies clinic in Florida, and she did not show where the paperwork was at this time. None of the dogs were licensed in the Town of Rutland. Both parties stated that they had just moved to Mass. a few months ago and were unaware of the licensing process. I proceeded to quarantine Amber as required by Mass. General Law one twenty-nine and advised Mr. Kratz that Amber was not to leave the property for a period of ten days and that I return at the end of the quarantine to evaluate and release her. I informed Mrs. Waymoth of all of this at the time and told her to consult her physician. On August seventeenth, I returned to eighty Hillside Road and evaluated and released Amber from quarantine. On August eighteenth, Mr. Kratz provided me with proof that both dogs had been vaccinated for rabies that day. On August twentieth, Mr. Kratz provided me with proof that all four dogs were now licensed in the Town of Rutland. I have no other complaints on file regarding any of the dogs owned by Ms. Garcia Morales or Mr. Kratz.
Um, Mrs. Waymoth, do you have testimony that you would like to provide? And if so, I'll ask that you're sworn in by, um, Tamika.
I have never felt so important in my life.
Laurel Lynn, do you swear that the testimony you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Should I just?
Wherever you're comfortable.
All right. Um, I think that Officer Ford, you know, kind of told what happened. But I was out for a run on the evening of August seventh. And I was running, so going towards the house, it's like slowly going uphill, and then the hill kind of drops off right where the house is. So just before I could see the house, coming the other way was a man pushing a stroller. And in the stroller was a young, maybe one to two-year-old. He had two dogs with him, both leashed. I waved hi to him. I made faces at the baby, you know, smiled, and they went on their way, and I crested the hill. And as I'm coming down the hill, the house is now on my right. I'm on the opposite side of the road, and I see four dogs running towards me. And as a runner, this is something I see often, and before I panic, I remind myself that they're probably going to stop. And almost every time, although not every time before, the dogs, there's an electric fence that I don't know about, or they're on a leash that I didn't see. So at this point, I'm expecting that they're gonna stop running. And it wasn't until they were in the road that I realized they were coming straight at me. And it was not, not a whole second from the time I realized that till the dog Amber's, till the time Amber's teeth were in me. Um, I was screaming, yelling at the girl there to get them away from me. Eventually, they kind of got away to the point that I could start to move again, and then um, the black dog, I don't know its name, came back at me again. Um, it didn't bite me, and then eventually she got them all off me. She had asked if I was bitten, and at the time, I said I wasn't sure. Um, I had pain, but I didn't know if it had scratched me or bitten me. Um, so once they were all away, I ran down the road around the corner and just collapsed hysterical in the street. And it wasn't until then that I pulled my pants down, and I could see her full set of teeth, um, two puncture marks, and what ended up being a fairly large swollen bruise. Um, I don't know. I have, for your viewing. I don't know if you all want a copy or this is mine. Phil from the doctor. And also, this is the report. And that, so I did not originally, I, I refused medical care because I knew I didn't need stitches. Um, and I thought that that was that. And then, um, speaking with some friends, you know, they told me if there's, if, if the skin has been broken, you're at risk for infection. You should call the doctor, call the doctor. And then it was quite a while of trying to work with the doctor to get an appointment. Um, urgent care refused to see me because the dogs did not have vaccination records, so they would not see me. They told me I had to go to the emergency room, but I knew after speaking to Officer Ford that I was supposed to wait ten days, but I couldn't wait ten days with possible infection. So the doctor ended up holding hours after the day ended, so that I could come in and be seen that day, the day after the bite.
Thank you. Um, sorry, I was just in reviewing.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. I want to provide the board ample opportunity to review. Um, do, do the dog owners, does Amber owner residence care to, um, speak? And please just see Tamika.
Sure. Good evening. Attorney Jeremy Cohen with Boston Dog Lawyers. I'm not a witness, so I'm not gonna be sworn in. Thank you. Could I have an opportunity to see that paperwork that was just handed in?
Yeah.
It's only one page. I haven't seen it.
Yeah, yeah.
Good evening, Attorney Corbo. Thank you.
Do you want to hang on to it for?
Can we?
For right now, I mean.
Yeah, we won't take it with us. Thank you. I'm here representing Dharma and Eric for the, based off the incident that happened. And I've had a chance to put some paperwork together. I believe it's been submitted to the board of some remedial measures, and what happened to Miss Waymoth is, it's unacceptable. None of us would want that in our neighborhood. So when I decide to take on a case, I want to understand why it happened and how we're gonna prevent this from happening again. And the why is because Dharma, as you heard, was in Puerto Rico. Eric, her fiance, wasn't home, and in an unusual move, Eric's teenage daughter was visiting. She's about fourteen. So she ordered a pizza, or he ordered a pizza for her, and she went outside to, to go get the pizza, and she left the doorjar. Typically, this doesn't happen in this household because the dogs are kept in a, in a room that has a screen already. There's four dogs, so they stay in a, in a sort of living room type area where they wouldn't have access to the front door. So we had a person who's, wasn't used to being there, who made a mistake. So it doesn't make it any less traumatic, what happened to Miss Waymoth, but in terms of security for the community, it helps explain why this happened. And the steps, my clients have only lived here about two and a half months. I think they came up in June to that property. And they've taken significant steps voluntarily in anticipation of tonight and in a relatively short amount of time to make sure something like this doesn't happen again. So we're about a month, almost a month removed. As you can see, Amber is a, is an Australian shepherd who, and now Australian shepherds can be a little anxious and energetic by nature and certainly try to corral people according to their rules. And now Amber had moved to a new, new location. So there's, there's heightened anxiety for that dog, which she's getting treatment for. As you saw, my clients engaging Stephanie Duka to do, she's gonna first do a behavioral evaluation. That appointment is September eleventh. And at that evaluation, it's gonna be determined what is Amber anxious, what we can do, what they can do to, to try to recondition her to the new location. She's three years old, so she's certainly trainable. And so you have two things happening. You have behavioral changes that they'll work on, and then you have equipment changes. And the equipment changes include, now they have a, um, as, as you see, a gate that blocks the front entrance, so it's like a backstop. So if somebody comes to the door, the human being can go to the door and make sure the dog isn't there, and the dogs have a barrier before they can get to the front door. And oftentimes, my clients don't use the front door, but being that Eric's teenage daughter, she doesn't usually, at the house, she uses the front door. I think they've also put up a sign, beware of dogs. I, while that may not be necessary, it's still helpful so other runners or people who come around could understand that, all right, when you go to the property, just be aware that there's dogs here and just be cognizant of that. It could also be that, that Amber needs to be medicated. Many dogs are on medication, and now that Dharma's established a relationship with a vet, that's something that will be looked at. So these people, these owners are, are engaged. They, they, they take this very personal, that this happened essentially on their watch, even though they weren't there. So they're taking accountability. And fortunately, it, this resulted in just the two hundred dollar medical bill, and Mrs. Waymoth, Mrs. Waymoth didn't have to go through the rabies protocol or anything like that. The dogs are all licensed. They're all up to date. Amber had been, but had been up to date on her vaccine, but again, that was in the Florida paperwork. Uh, they use a special prong collar with Amber right now so that she, she doesn't pull, so they have control over her. They don't often walk her off the property. If they do, she has this prong collar on. I, I suggested one dog per one adult, but two of the, meaning Amber would be walked by one person who wouldn't be walking a, a second dog, so they could focus on Amber. Two of the dogs combined weigh twenty-five pounds. I think one is eleven pounds and one, or one's fourteen and one's thirteen pounds or something like that. I know that ACO Ford had a chance to evaluate, spend time with Amber, and from that, we haven't heard anything, that it was a negative interaction. So what I've included here with the packet is to suggest to the board that certainly an order should be put in place so that, um, Mrs. Waymoth and, and other neighbors feel that, okay, if something were to happen again, there's an order in place, and we could, they could then come before you where the consequences are stronger. But right now, I'm suggesting that, under the controlling statute, and I, I shared a little bit of it, and I'm sure Attorney Corbo will address it, and he already has alluded to the fact that this, there's something lesser than dangerous. Now, even though the board's letter says we're just gonna determine whether the dog's dangerous or not, well, if you determine, determine not, then we don't have an order in place. So the lesser is a nuisance, is to deem the dog a nuisance. And the reason I included some select paperwork in here from the statute is to show that, under the nuisance definition, first, the dog fits the nuisance definition in Massachusetts because while it's certainly, the dog attacked somebody, um, the, the, as the statute says, the incident or the, the damage was not grossly disproportionate to, to the entire scene. So we have a dog that's running off, apparently gets there within one second. And, but doesn't, the, all four of these dogs, there's no bites except this one bite from, from Amber. So Amber's reaction was not grossly disproportionate to having a runner go by, who she's probably not used to and is probably trying to corral. As, if you deem the dog nuisance, the board has wider range in terms of what to order. And I come here, I'm bringing this up, I just have chosen one thing to do in my career, so I'm, just happen to be familiar with the statute. And under nuisance, you have more of a catch-all opportunity to order some of the things that we put in versus if you deem the dog dangerous, the board doesn't, the board is, is really hamstrung by what the statute says. Under nuisance, it says that you can impose anything, any remedies that will ameliorate the situation. And that's why we've suggested and implemented many of the things that could not be ordered under a dangerous dog order. So I appreciate the board entertaining that and considering that. Again, clients are, are sorry for what happened. They're certainly available if there's out-of-pocket or anything that, that the victim would like from them. We know they did comply with the first order, the quarantine order. To the extent that these items have been done or are being done, and what I say is not testimony, Dharma would, is willing to be sworn in to take questions and to just confirm that these things have been done.
I know he already said we're sorry.
Second. You need to be sworn in.
Sorry. Yeah. Yeah.
Um, do you swear that the testimony you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes.
And, okay.
No, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
No, we truly sorry our family, to Mrs. Waymoth's family. Definitely the only reason we hire lawyers because we not know the rules. We moved from Florida and we're like, we're not aware of all the rules. We didn't want to get this far, obviously, but I get that communicating one-on-one would be difficult as well, so, but.
Can you confirm, uh, so I talked about your, thank you, meeting up with Stephanie Duka? Is that on September eleventh?
Yeah, I have an email.
Okay, but I, but I, you're, you're testifying, so just confirm that. The beware of dog signs are up?
Yeah, they're up.
Okay.
In the corner, I mean, if I need to move them so people can see it.
The, you've got this internal gate, which the picture we shared with them.
Yeah, that's been always there. I have a target receipt where we bought it months. I have a target receipt where we bought it months, like, we've been having that for a few months.
And if the dog's outside, none of your dogs, you know, are supposed to be outside without a leash?
No, we always leash them from inside the home.
All right, and under, one thing I didn't mention to the board was, and I sent you this information too, to understand it, a violation of a nuisance order has the same consequences as the violation of a dangerous dog order. And there's three separate statutes that I provided, that you could be charged criminally, you could be fined, they could seize and euthanize Amber. You could be subject to a hearing here and then even a hearing in court. So if, as you're, if the board rules in your favor and deems the dog, whatever they deem the dog, there's going to be an order, that the consequences of, of violating it can be significant. You understand that?
Yeah, I do.
Through the chair. Counselor, I apologize if it's here and I haven't read it. Are you renting or leasing? Is that what it is?
Renting.
Okay, are the dogs on the lease?
Yes.
Yeah.
So all four dogs are on the lease to the house?
Yes.
Okay.
And they have renters insurance if, if there was a claim or something?
Yeah, no, I'm just, I, I mean, as a, as a member of the board, my obligation is to the town and obviously to the residents. So my, you know, what's done is done, you can't change what's been done. But I'm concerned about a road like that, that a lot of people run on. A lot of people, you know, like Ms. Waymoth said, walk kids in carriages and stuff. So obviously, you know, we have to think about, God forbid, next time.
Yeah.
There's nothing we can do about what happened. Thank God she wasn't hurt. So, you know, I, I mean, I, I guess more importantly, I, I want to ask Ms. Waymoth. I mean, if, you know, what is it you would, what would make you feel? I mean, what you went through is traumatic, obviously. I've been bitten by a dog, it's a horrifying experience. What is it help us make a decision in regards to what's best for the town and, and you? You're going up and down that road again, right? I'm assuming you're not going to avoid it, right?
I have not gone down that road since.
Right.
It's a route that I used to run multiple times a week, and I can't fathom a time when I would ever do it again. So I, before, when I was talking, I, I started to say, and then kind of got lost in my own story, right before I got to the house, coming the other way was a man pushing a stroller. And all I could think afterwards was if I didn't do anything about this, and the next time it happened, it was that child's face or some other child. I, I couldn't, I would not be okay with having done nothing. So that's why I'm here tonight, to protect the next person, whoever that is.
I mean, I guess for me personally, if, you know, our animal control officer verified that all these checks were done and this, this dog, you know, there's no such thing as a sure thing. But do you feel comfortable checking on this residence and these owners to make sure that this dog just is secured in a way that won't hurt any?
And I just received this today as well, as far as the plan that they put in place. And from experience, and I'm not discounting this incident and how horrific and terrifying it was, I think they were more than generous with the things that they implemented. My list would, my recommendation list would have been shorter. They have been nothing but responsible since the incident, nothing but responsive. And the dogs have never been off the property any other time, to my knowledge. I think if these things were implemented, or a handful of these things were implemented, and I could go secure the, make sure the residents were secure, that, that would certainly be acceptable on my end. Like I said, I think they went above and beyond with some of the things that they put into place.
Ms. Waymoth, have you seen the list?
I, I have the list. I do have a couple actual questions on the list. One is that the, I, I, the idea of the gate inside is great, but I believe the gate was there at the time. She said she had purchased it months ago. So if the gate was there and the dog still got out, then the gate is not?
I think that was because the dog had used the front door and the gate is at the back door, which is something they typically use, but both entrances can obviously be gated.
So that's one thing. Another thing is, and I don't know, my, I'm not, I only got this right before I came tonight, so I didn't have time to like really research it. But is, is a Baskerville muzzle a training muzzle, or is it a bite-proof muzzle?
Muzzles aren't used in training, they're used to prevent a bite, to prevent a bite, anytime.
Okay, because in my brief Google search, what I saw was that you could still bite through it and that it was not?
Basket buzzer you can't bite through.
A Baskerville muzzle is what it says.
A Baskerville.
It's the same thing, and right now, that's not the one she's using. If the trainer suggests that the muzzle she has isn't significant enough, then she'll go to Baskerville. Basket or Baskerville.
Additionally, I have two more things. One, the dog's not outside without a leash. Is there a regulation on how long the leash can be, retractable leash, non-retractable leash?
Off the property, I would say the leash has to be, you know, no longer than six feet on the property, as long as they're on their property, as long as their dog is contained within them, then I feel that's appropriate.
You comfortable with that, Ms. Waymoth?
Um, yeah, and then my other thing is just, I don't understand why the dog would be a nuisance and not dangerous. I was under the impression, although this is obviously not my area of expertise, that a nuisance dog was related to barking excessively. And it says here in what came from the board, that if a dog is dangerous, meaning it has caused injury by attacking a person or animal without justification. And I obviously didn't do anything to the dog. I don't know, you know.
So I think, I think, and maybe Attorney Corbo or, correct me if I'm wrong, but on the last page of the packet, nuisance dog, a dog that, I, by excessive barking or other discernment is a source of annoyance or to a sick person residing in the vicinity, or two, by excessive barking causing damage or other interference, a reasonable person would find such behavior disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment, or three, has threatened or attacked livestock, a domestic animal, or a person, but such threat or attack is not a grossly disproportionate reaction under all circumstances. I think that that's where, because I think that's a common, commonality. I've read through it a few times because I always kind of defaulted to nuisance dog being an annoying dog that barks and.
And just to touch on that, like the attorney had mentioned, if a dog is deemed dangerous, there is a list of things that the state provides that we can put into play. And you have to choose, you have to, you can do one or, you know, one or all seven. By deeming a nuisance, it gives them a wider range to put in other things into play as well, like a dog only being walked by an adult, that kind of thing, that wouldn't fall into that dangerous dog category. So it actually has given us more tools to secure the dog by deeming it, and if it's deemed a nuisance than if it's deemed dangerous.
Okay.
I have two questions. I was looking at the paperwork for when the dog was licensed, and it says she's unaltered. Is there a reason for that?
Well, was that going to be written?
The fact that she's not spayed initially because of the.
Initially, when I tried, I never had her in the heartworm disease pill, and she needed to be six to eight months on that treatment before. And I was spending hundreds of dollars on that first. And then by that time, I was a single mom, so none specific, I have nothing against. It's just, we've been very busy.
Do you have plans to?
I can, yeah.
And I think my other question is, for Attorney Corbo, if there is a determination, whether it's nuisance or a dangerous dog, is, I didn't see anything in MGL, is that able to be, oh, the term is revoked, if they show, whether it's through behavioral review, whatever, that that can be taken off?
Thank you, through Madam Chair. So do you mean, like, removing the label after a certain amount of time of quote-unquote good behavior?
Correct, essentially.
That's not something that, that is typically done, but it's also something that would be within the jurisdiction of the board if it saw, you know, fit under the circumstances, you know, that there's been a sufficient amount of time with no additional incidents, that the safeguards seem to be working, and that the dog, you know, that the board wishes to relieve the owners of the responsibility of having that label.
Thank you.
And if I may, similar, Attorney Corbo, if the board were to deem the dog a quote-unquote lesser and there were a recurring, recurring incidents or something, and another hearing, the board would have the authority, the, the purview to kind of escalate the, the, the label of the dog, correct?
That, that's correct. And not only escalate the label, but also escalate the conditions that have been put in place. And, you know, typically, that would happen if either the terms of your order are not being complied with, or if they are being complied with, but yet there's still another incident. And, you know, that would then justify the board issuing an additional order, and whether that is to change it from nuisance to dangerous and to add additional conditions, all the way up to having the dog euthanized. And as Attorney Cohen mentioned earlier, there are serious penalties in the, the general laws for not complying with an order, whether it's a nuisance order or a dangerous order. You know, not only are there criminal penalties and fines, but the dog would be subject to seizure and the owner would be prohibited from owning a dog in the Commonwealth for a period of five years after that. So, I mean, whether you call this a nuisance or a danger, that there are sufficient incentives for the owner to comply with your order, but there are sufficient opportunities for you to modify that order if it's not working.
Thank you. I just want to also call attention in the packet from Attorney Cohen is a letter from the pet sitter of Amber from Florida, just so that there's clear documentation. We have that as a piece of evidence.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Before the board starts its deliberations, would you mind if I asked a couple of questions?
Yeah, please do.
Thank you. I, I'm not familiar with what the, the setup of the property is. And is there a fenced yard on the property?
No.
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 Okay, and so then, you mentioned earlier that, that the dogs are not frequently walked on a leash. But if there's no fenced-in yard, then how do the dogs go out?
In the back of the yard, like, we have plenty backyard, and we have a hook that we attach on the floor as well. They basically get the exercise over there within the same property. I mean, it's.
All five dogs have, or all four dogs have 50-foot cords, and they're in the very back of the yard. So they're, remain behind the house, and they're all attached to the ground.
Greg, excuse me, if, if you were to Google this property, you would see that 50 feet, it's not like 50 feet, one of our houses, this place is, it's a, it's an old farm, so 50 feet is just a small portion of the property when they're in back tethered.
And it's actually 25 feet long.
Over 200 feet from the, from the road.
Okay, the, the concern there, however, is that the, you know, the, the statute says that the dogs are not supposed to be chained or tethered to an inanimate object. And so I think the concern might be is, you know, how are the dogs being supervised when they're outside if there's no fenced-in yard?
Uh, we have a room that we, maybe, like, if people walk by, they think they're unsupervised. But we have, like, a six-window clear, and I'm, I'm working from home, so I kind of sit down close to the window. My view is my dogs right there. And all the collars that we use, they're actually, don't allow them to pull back. I have one of them here as an example, kind of stick on their neck if they're trying to run or pull back.
And is there then the possibility of, of putting in some sort of dog run or other type of enclosure where the dogs can be kept outside so they don't have to be tethered?
Uh, we'll have to discuss that with the lender. We're just renting. I mean, we are looking all the options, it's not like we're not. The time they stay outside is within 10, 15 minutes, getting their sun. One of them had a condition, they actually need to take some, sun, vitamin D from the direct sun. And that's the only reason they spend outside on the leash. But when we're walking them, we're walking them within the property ourselves, so.
And just the last set of questions, did you own Amber when you lived in Florida?
Uh, yes.
And were there ever any biting incidents involving Amber when you were in Florida?
Uh, no, this is the very first time. Actually, we weren't there, so I don't know. This is a very, you know, unfortunately, incident and very surprising for myself and my fiance. And most of the people that walk by Amber kind of know them. Like Alex, our neighbor with, the man with the stroller, he had a five-year-old and a baby. She had met them, so she kind of knows them and how to calm down when she knows the people. Our closer neighbors, she also know them. So like I say, yeah.
Thank you, I have nothing further, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Attorney Corbo.
Madam Chair, I have some questions.
Yep.
I have several questions, some for Ms. Waymoth, some for Ms. Morales, and one for the ACO. First, Ms. Waymoth. When you were running and the dog came after you, was there, the stroller and the other dogs, the two dogs you said he had, were they far away from you?
They were out of sight at the time.
They were out of sight. So Ms. Morales said that they know those dogs, those dogs know the other dogs, they didn't go after them. So I'm trying to figure out why the dog changed his mind and went after you. If, not even for the dog to go after the other ones, to play with the other dogs.
I'm not sure of the, like, I wasn't, I couldn't see the house when they went by. I, I think maybe they weren't outside. I, I think the door opened in, in the short in-between time because they made a beeline from the door straight for me. I didn't see them, they weren't like out sitting on the lawn and then started coming at me. The first time, from when I could see them, they were running towards me.
Okay, question two. How often did you run by the house before this incident?
So I would normally run to the top of the hill and turn around probably a couple times a week, fully past the house. I hadn't been in, I don't know, maybe a month or so, because I had seen a bear on that road. So, so I probably hadn't gone past the house in a month.
When you ran past the house, did you hear barking? Were there barking at you because your presence was there? Was that a?
As they were running at me, they were.
No, I'm talking about before, when your normal run.
No, I had never, I had no indication of the dogs at all prior.
Okay. When the dog bit you, was it a quick bite, or did the dog hold on?
Um, I would say quicker.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, people say, oh, why didn't you do this, why didn't you do that? There were four of them. The one that bit me was behind me. I wasn't even looking at it, I was looking at the other three.
Well, I was just trying to gauge whether the dog did quick like this, or there were just, and it was holding on.
No, it was, it was quicker.
Okay. Ms. Morales, you said that, you stated that you owned the dog when you were in Florida. Did you purchase the dog there, or did you move to Florida with the dog?
I moved to Florida with the dog.
Okay, when you moved to Florida with the dog, did the dog show any type of reaction to the change of scenery or the change of location?
Uh, no, not really. Like I say, the first impression, she'll bark until you say kind of hi to her, she'll stop and kind of like relax.
She wasn't really anxious or anything like she was when she moved here, you're saying?
Uh, no, here I noticed she was a little bit more anxious. I wasn't in the home, either my fiance, and it was just his daughter visiting, which she doesn't get to see that often. So, you know, I don't know, she felt like she had a free, free way to run around. And, but no, like, we usually control them, so not incidents.
Was the dog on or not on medication in Florida?
Uh, no.
No medication in Florida?
No.
Okay. ACO, when you visited the dog and you had, when you visited Amber, and you had interaction with her, how did you find her? Was the dog friendly, was the dog a little pensive? What, what was your? Did was the dog friendly? Was the dog a little pensive? What what was your reaction to that dog?
Cautiously friendly.
Cautiously?
Cautiously friendly. She does need a minute to warm up and kind of sniff and get to know you. She's not the one that's gonna be, but she hasn't met you yet. She's not gonna be the puppy that's jumping up to, hey, come see you. She wants to sniff, she wants you to give her a couple minutes, but after that I was able to pet her and she was fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh please for one question. Um where did you get the dog from? Did was she adopted?
Uh New York. She has a puppy. She was two months old.
Was it from a a breeder or was it a rescue or?
Uh a breeder.
A breeder.
Mm-hmm. Does the board have any other questions um before we close the hearing and go into our deliberations? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing. So moved.
Second. Second eye.
Matt's an eye.
Uh white and eye.
Galvan eye.
White and eye, seven oh eight to make up the closing. Um so now we have the information um and I the board has the opportunity now to deliberate. Um and we have access to Attorney Corbo if if needed. Um and I believe uh ACO um Freiberg as well. Um but I think we have kind of three options. Um and within those three options, I think the board can move uh choose to dismiss the complaint entirely against Amber. Um the board could deem Amber to be a nuisance dog as we had has had been kind of laid out before us. Um and if the board decided to do so, lay some conditions. Um and or the board could deem Amber to be dangerous, blessings to her. Um and for that, we have a very specific set of um conditions or orders that we could um impose. Um so this is opportunity for the board. This is our um our time to deliberate.
Yeah, I mean my I go back to what I said earlier. My three points is I care about what Ms. Waymouth cares about. I I want her to feel safe going by that house. I don't want to see anybody get bit. Um and I'm concerned about the liability to the town. Um Attorney Corbo. I mean, if if we go with this list, are you comfortable that that would, God forbid, cover the town if if something like this were to happen again or?
Yes, I'm I am very comfortable with that. Um under the Massachusetts general laws, the town has immunity for um claims that are caused by third parties or circumstances that the town is not responsible for. So in a circumstance like this, um you know, even if you do nothing, the um it's the owner of the dog that is responsible for the bite and it is that party that is going to be held liable if there are any damages. Um and the town would have, um in my opinion, very strong defenses regardless of what it does here.
Okay. I mean, again, I'm com- these are a lot of, this list is, there's a lot going on in that list, so. I mean, Ms. Waymouth, again, do you feel comfortable with that? You feel safe as far as, I just want to make sure that you feel.
I think that what uh wasn't, what isn't written on here is that the leash should be six feet.
Well, I think that's the law, isn't it? Is that the law, six feet a leash? No?
No.
Okay.
The law is actually three feet.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's for a dangerous dog, but the regular leash. As far as the leash law, there isn't a a.
No length? Okay, I mean.
Um the the three feet is if the dog was deemed dangerous, would have to be walked on a three-foot leash with a tactile strength up to, I believe, three hundred pounds. But if we if if you chose to impose that particular.
So just a standard leash as opposed to an extendable, you're saying basically, right? The ones that go up twenty feet or whatever? Yeah, I mean, I don't problem with that. That's reasonable.
Um the rest of the board, I mean, we have kind of the um recommendation, I think, from the attorney representing um Amber's family um to uh deem Amber a nuisance and um provide some conditions. Um and I think that that I would hope would be uh instill some sense of safety in the community to Ms. Wa- Mrs. Waymouth as well as to the rest of the running community, walking community, um everything. Um but the board, I want to have the conversation for the.
Well, everybody here from this town knows that property.
Mm-hmm.
It's right? It's wide open.
Right.
It's wide open. So there needs to be some type of leashing system that's gonna contain these dogs when they're outside, right?
I mean, I think this in, yes, and I think this current instance has been the dogs were inside and accidentally let out.
But it's human error.
Right, exactly.
And there's always human, you always have to consider a human error, so.
There's always gonna, even walking a dog on a leash, heaven forbid, the leash could slip out of the hand or tie the person up and and whatever. I mean, it's.
So what are what are you, so what are we talking about right now? What, which one of the, are we picking the whole list or is it?
Well, if I may, I I I try and put myself in in the shoes of both sides. I I'm a dog owner too, so um it's trying to put myself in Mrs. Waymouth's shoes. I I look at the nuisance dog definition and I I wonder it, does she feel that the response by the dog was not a grossly disproportionate reaction? Like what constitutes not being grossly disproportionate? I I go for a walk, I don't expect to be accosted by a dog and attacked. That to me is not justified, just walking by a piece of property. I have a concern because there's four dogs. Pack mentality, if they all are getting together, uh whether or not there's, you know, ill intent by the dog or if it was just they got out, again, there's four, they're all working together. Whether she was just trying to corral you or we, I don't know. I I can't say if there's a behavioral component versus uh like a a negative behavioral, like an actual, I'm attacking you because I don't want you here versus a trying to corral you in a a different method without having some sort of analysis by a behavioral, a certified behaviorist which, you know, you are engaging. So that's kind of where I have questions. And again, if there's, you know, especially young children, what if there's young ki- I I I've got my kids, they're all in my neighborhood. They're running up and down the streets, they're running, riding their bikes. I I I don't want to have children feel unsafe, that they can't be outside and enjoying the the time it's too. So that's um just some thoughts that I have, just in in general, not necessarily saying one way or the other, but just some things for consideration.
I think for me, and I want to hear it, Paul and Harry, I want to hear from you. For me, um hearing that it was kind of a a quick bite, like a uh not a sink on and continue, I think to me leads it more to that kind of very unfortunate and traumatizing, but not a not a vicious mauling attack versus a a more excited unfortunate bite um for me. And I have kids and I have dogs also, full disclosure. And um I think hmm many of us have had similar experiences, not maybe to a a biting extent, but have had, um whether it's with dogs or or wild wildlife or whatever as well. So I think that that's also a piece of um where I'm trying to come from is what is what is reasonable for the dog owners and and also what is reasonable for the for the public as well. Um given that we don't have any history, any other history of Amber being um aggressive or
that that we have here before us.
Correct. I'm and we've asked under under oath if there's been anything and and the answer has been no. So that's, I mean, all that we can do.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Um so um but for me, that's for me personally, but Harry, Paul, I would be.
I have to agree, but there's there's no history of any any other attempts by uh the dog to bother anybody who happens to be walking through the area, running through the area or whatever. So you know, this is um um so far, it's just a first time incident, so. And it appears to have been covered very nicely by the owners, so.
And just to point out to add to that, Paul, the newer to town, they've only been in town for a couple of months, so. There's only so much that we would have available to us as far as local history.
Sorry.
I I have a a concern that that type of dog seems to be have an anxiety issue. And that this probably, for whatever reason, was triggered. And Ms. Waymouth was the subject of that, unfortunately. So and I've read a little bit about Australian shepherds, which they do seem to be a little anx- have a little bit of an anxiety issue. So if that can be controlled, if we encourage medication or whatever. I I don't know how you do that with a dog. I've owned a lot of dogs, but my anxious dogs, I always tire them out by playing with them so much. So I don't have too much of an issue there. But it does concern me, this time, that kind of a dog, even though it becomes familiar with other people, but it takes a while to get familiar with people, that if somebody isn't familiar with this dog, how do you control its anxiety issue? Something has to be done there. Okay, we don't want to see this happen again. Uh as far as four dogs are concerned, they weigh twenty pounds between the two of them.
Yeah, one of them is.
The other two small dogs?
Yeah, I think eleven and thirteen or something.
How many dogs are they? And I know we had a lot of questions.
Multiple and then uh chihuahua, they're like a mix between chihuahua and then chihuahua and.
They bark a lot, yeah.
Uh which we have bark collars for them. That's why probably Ms. Waymouth never heard them before. But like I say, our teenager from my fiancee part was visiting and um so.
I don't see this dog being a pit bull, having a tendency to get outside its comfort zone. But I do think, yeah, we need to restrain it, uh whatever the board decides. Uh I think it needs to be medicated, but that's my personal opinion, slow it down a little bit. Um the fact that, and I feel bad for Ms. Waymouth, uh getting the bite, but the fact that the dog didn't try to take her down, didn't hang on to her, says that the dog reacted to something. And I don't think it was her. I think she was just running and I think the dog had an episode. So but I can't, I guess I can't in all honesty come to the conclusion that I need to take the dog's life, if you will, because we're gonna deem it a totally dangerous animal. I I have a serious issue for that for this one instance.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Um so if if I could um just sort of focus, I think, the board's discussion, um since I'm guessing that the the outcome will likely be the same whether you find it to be a dangerous dog or a nuisance dog. And so um my suggestion would be that you that you start with with the label that you want to choose. Um and you know, I know there's been a bit of discussion as to what is the difference between um dangerous and and nuisance. And um you know, these definitions are not clear. Um they're not clear to a a layperson and you know, they're not even clear to me who's been doing this for for twenty years. But you know, the way that I've always sort of looked at these definitions when it comes to a biting incident is that um it's more a matter of of degree. And a a dangerous dog is is one that, you know, a attacks um someone um, you know, for the the purpose of causing harm um and and does cause serious harm with, you know, a deep bite or by latching on or or shaking its head. Um you know, versus a a nuisance dog that might have a more um minor bite in response to a specific circumstance. Um and here, you you know, you you have this situation where um you have a highly unusual circumstance where the dog is is out, where it's not usually out. It sees someone running by. It is um an Australian shepherd that has a hurting instinct. Um and you know, this this is definitely hurting type behavior of, you know, chasing someone that's running and and you know, nipping at them um while they are trying to sort of corral them. And then you have the anxiety issues. Um but you know, I think that, you know, you can, so based on those facts, you can consider this to be a a nuisance dog. But you know, honestly, you know, this is a, it fits the definition of an attack, right? An attack is an aggressive physical contact initiated by an animal. Um so it clearly was an attack and it clearly was was without justification um since nothing was done to provoke um this incident. So I may not have helped you there, maybe I made it worse. But um I I would at least start with that question. And then um you know, I have some some tweaks to the the list of conditions that I would suggest. Um but like I said, I think we should start there and then um go on to the rest of it.
So I think, I mean, I personally am more comfortable labeling this dog and after this instance, a nuisance personally than a dangerous dog. And um because I do feel that it was not a an attack with very malicious intent. I realize that it was an attack and law and Mrs. Waymouth, I know it was traumatic and I'm not trying to minimize that at all and I appreciate you coming in and sharing this with all of us. Um but I don't think that it was a malicious attack with the intent to take any individual down. Um and we have clearly some very responsible or re- responsible owners who are willing to work with the town um and and figure out the community piece of it, I think. Um but how does the rest of the board feel about that nuisance versus dangerous?
I mean, I'm comfortable. Our our animal professionals right there and she's said you're comfortable with it, right? As far as that title? Yeah, okay. So I I mean, I'm I'm not an expert on animals, but uh.
I agree.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
So it's Jen, Harry, I Jen, I heard your kind of confliction. I don't wanna.
Yes, I I try and look at it from both perspectives, um but just, you know, seeing what we have here, again, not having a history. I have some concerns that might I might be able to address when we get to the second piece of this. But I relative to the label, I I would be in agreement with a nuisance.
Yeah, I I tend to agree with the nuisance definition.
Okay.
We can be very strict on the nuisance, but I agree with the nuisance.
Um and I I would just like to say, I I agree with the nuisance, again, from the the feedback that we've gotten from the the professionals and the the legal side, that given that, you know, it wasn't an attack where, like you said, they didn't let go, there wasn't, you know, continued going back. It was a single, again, not to minimize it. But just the the way that it all it played out from that perspective.
Attorney Corbin, would you recommend that then that we do the vote as a nuisance dog and then do a second vote with the conditions? Or should we um do the nuisance and the conditions together? I was leaning towards nuisance and conditions together, but I don't, I prefer your professional.
Um so I I actually prefer to just do them one at a time so that um you know, you've you've made your decision as to whether it's a nuisance or a danger or dismissing the the complaint. And then we can move on to the the second piece of it.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion that pursuant to MGL chapter one. I'm just coloring in it, one forty, section one fifty-seven. I move to deem Amber to be a nuisance dog and further order that the owner and keeper of the dog take remedial actions to ameliorate the cause of the nuisance behavior.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Conversation about this motion. Roll call, Harry.
Second eye.
Matt's an eye.
Matt's an eye.
Galvan eye.
White and eye. Um and now to discuss kind of the the orders or the conditions. Um A- Attorney Corbin, did you see the packet that was provided by Attorney Cohen?
Um ye- yes, I did. And so. Um ye- yes, I did, and so um you know, my thinking was maybe, uh because I I have some thoughts about, you know, how some of those suggestions um could be fleshed out a bit. Um and so, you know, through you, Madam Chair, you know, maybe we can just go through them one at a time and I can give you my um thoughts and and board members can, you know, fill in um what the gaps might be.
Sounds good.
Okay, um so with respect to the the first condition, engage a behavioral training trainer for territorial anxiety. Um you know, I think, you know, that is a a good um suggestion and it was supported by Animal Control. Um my um suggested addition to that would be to set a a deadline for um completion of that training. Um and and maybe an interim deadline of, you know, showing proof of enrollment. And then, you know, completion of the course within a a certain period of time, you know. Um I I would suggest that, you know, ten days to two weeks for enrollment would be reasonable. Followed by, you know, two to three months of for completion, depending on, you know, what the the trainer's course is like.
Uh I just, I I I want, I I think I had heard that they've already engaged.
Yeah.
And she's set to start, Amber's set to start, I believe.
Yeah, on Wednesday.
Nine eleven.
Okay.
On on September eleventh. My, and I don't know enough about this training, I'm gonna default to our animal control officer. But my kind of thinking is that this training might be something that's ongoing and not a defined course pe- length of time.
That was gonna be my my point, that you're not talking about a basic obedience class that runs for six to eight weeks, that runs for an hour every Wednesday night. Um if, and I know the trainer fairly well as well, um I'm very comfortable and have a lot of confidence in her, confidence in her. Um but if you're looking at behavior training for a dog, you don't set an end date, you stop when the dog is improving or has improved. To say that we're gonna do this for six, eight, six weeks or six months or six, it's going to be private sessions and they're gonna be working with her until we see the results that we're looking for. So to set, to try to set a, you know, they need to do this for six months or whatever, this is not like a typical basic obedience class. And it'd be very difficult for probably any trainer to initially tell you how long it's gonna take.
Um and we do.
And through you, Ma- Madam Chair, and um I don't necessarily disagree with that, but at the same token, you you wanna have something enforceable um to make sure that there's follow through with this. Um and so my suggestion then, if this is an, you know, an ongoing weekly thing to at least or to say that, you know, the the program will be at least a certain period of time. Um you know, with some sort of certification by the trainer that, you know, there has been follow through and compliance with their instructions.
I would do number of sessions versus it might not be a weekly thing.
I was gonna say, I was wondering, and Jen, uh I'm gonna default to you because you have a little bit more experience with this, a set number of sessions. Or until um there's significant, i- until the trainer feels that there's significant progress.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
I'm just, having been through something similar myself, I I even hesitate to say number of trainings to be, number of sessions to be completed.
Yeah, it's.
You just, you can't.
It's not something that is.
Is it, is it something where we can say, uh like request of the trainer?
Provide periodic updates or.
Provide, provide a periodic update of what you're working on with the dog, what the, what you're seeing as far as behavioral changes, what's being done and have that done, like.
And I do agree with.
Updates every two months or.
I do agree with all that, but there is going to be a point, there there could potentially be a point that this dog is reached its peak as far as trainability.
Yep.
And it's not as much about training at this point as it is about management. So if they're taking the appropriate steps management wise, as far as making sure this dog is not off the property uncontrolled. The training piece may never, they may never get, I could never make my dog like another dog with all the training in the world.
Right.
I manage my dogs extremely well.
Yeah.
So there's gonna be a point in any training that a dog maybe reaches his or her peak, depending on the breed of the dog, the personality of the dog, et cetera, et cetera. So if the management piece is in place and successful, I'm less concerned about where they are in their training.
Well, right, and I and that's why I'm suggesting if we can get periodic updates, whatever we feel is the right amount of time from the trainer to show that that is being managed. Uh that, you know, they've been through X number of sessions, this they're showing improvement, whatever it may be. You know, can we put, uh you know, where are you at at the two month mark, where are you at with the four month mark? Again, just to have something enforceable to say, you're doing what you need to. And we're not just saying, you know, okay, go do what you need to, but nothing, you know, you have one session and then there's nothing after that. And so that's why I want like some more of that accountability piece. And for me personally, something directly from a trainer as far as progress or observation will also be helpful.
Well, so Madam Chair, through you, so we could say that um, you know, Amber will um be enrolled in the behavioral training course with Stephanie Duka. Um and the trainer shall provide um periodic updates um at least um every eight weeks to show that the owner is following through with the training and complying with the trainer's recommendations.
To the ACL and then the ACL can distribute it to the.
But is there a timeframe that they're allowed to stop training? I mean, do they have to do this for the rest of the dog, I mean, is there a time? How do we say that, okay, they have reached this point, is that up to the trainer to decide that they've reached this point? Or do they have to pay for training forever?
No, no, I.
You know what I mean, it's gotta be a cutoff as well.
I would expect there to be something from the trainer that states, we've done what we can do at this point
Okay.
and it's up to them to continue managing it.
Okay.
So that, I mean, that's just mine.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think of.
If they've been given the tools, we can't just continuously, every eight weeks, what what's going on, what's going on, that's, that's not, you know, feasible.
Yeah.
But as long as the trainer has put them through what we they need to.
Okay.
And has said they have the tools, I mean, that to me would be sufficient.
And A- Attorney Corbin, Corbin, can, um Attorney Colin, can you confirm that the the start date is September eleventh, Wednesday, September eleven?
Uh I have an email, I mean, first she didn't have any space, uh we've been calling since, but yeah.
I have the email and I'll send it when I get back to.
Okay, just to, just so that we know that we have a definitive start date.
You did forward it to me.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, actually.
Yeah, I can confirm it tomorrow.
To me, correct?
Oh, thank you.
Okay, I'll send it to you now.
Sure, okay.
Nice meeting you.
I can confirm it, okay.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Um and so for bi-monthly check-ins through the ACL, um.
Eight weeks.
Yeah, eight weeks, yeah, yeah, sorry, okay, yeah, so, yeah, gotcha, yeah. Okay.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, was was that monthly check-ins, did you say?
I think uh the board was co- is comfortable with every eight weeks, not knowing how frequently the training sessions will be. Um and I believe it would go through the uh be disseminated to the ACL.
Yeah.
And then through to us.
Yeah, can we say every eight weeks or until the trainer determines there?
Yeah, I I would have said until the trainer certifies that the dog has been sufficiently trained.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, should we move on to the next part?
Please.
Okay, so um for the next part, um you know, uh my suggestion would be that, you know, when the dog is removed from the property, um that it be securely muzzled with the basket type muzzle um and kept on a leash with the minimum penile strength of three hundred pounds and not exceeding three feet in length. Um and that um the leash is held by a responsible adult capable of handling the dog. And and the person walking Amber will not walk any other dogs at the same time.
And that kind of lumps a few of those pieces together, it's, it tightens, it tightens that kind of, um I think originally we were hearing maybe a six foot leash um by default down to three foot. Um and including the three hundred pound notification specification when being walked off and including the muzzle as well. Um is the board comfortable with that? Um.
That wouldn't have been my recommendation, but I, it's.
Yeah.
My recommendation would be a six foot leash of normal strength, the dog's about a forty, fifty pound dog. She's not three hundred, you know, he's, it's, my recommendation would be an average six foot leash with a muzzle of an average strength.
Yeah.
But again, it's, I mean.
Yeah, yeah. And I think I was personally comfortable with an average six foot leash, um but um how the board feels.
Uh uh personally, I feel like three feet is the dog's walking at my foot. You know, tripping on the dog with just a three foot leash, so I would think a little bit more would be.
Um, yeah.
I think it's six foot with a muzzle.
I, yeah, I agree with that.
And I, so it sounds like Attorney Corbin, six foot with a muzzle and the, I I personally like the um a responsible adult who's able to to control, control slash manage um Amber and is only focused on Amber.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, okay, then, so for the next one, um I would suggest that Amber will not be left outside um without a muzzle and a leash um unless she is in um a secure enclosure constructed on the property.
Question for the attorney. When when that is put in place, is that a forever stipulation? Even if the dog by the trainer is certified that it's okay without the leash? Or is that stipulation of forever, as long as the dog's alive and is walking outside the house?
Well, so um as I I suggested earlier, I mean, none of this necessarily has to be forever. Um however, I wouldn't put a a deadline on it. Rather, you know, you could leave it to the the owner to come back with some sort of certification from the trainer saying um certain of these things are not necessary.
Right, I I may just have a quick, so are you saying if the dog's outside without an adult? I mean, if the dog's outside with with Dharma in her yard, well, the dog's gonna be leashed. S- can't, she's not gonna be muzzled. Are you talking with if the dog is just put outside to get sun or something?
Well, I, you know, leave that to the the board to decide, I mean, my concern, as I suggested with my questions earlier, was that, you know, there's no fenced in yard here. Um and so, you know, I don't know what the um ability is for this dog to to get off of the property. Um and so, you know, my suggestion would be is that if the dog is outside and it's not within a fenced enclosure, then it should be muzzled or leashed. But again, I would defer to um the board and the animal control officer.
I would just say, excuse me, um if that is the condition, I mean, we we've been super reasonable. If that's the condition that the dog can, if it's on the property with an owner, with a leash and has to wear a muzzle, then eh eh then we'd have to appeal it. And eh for this this situation with this dog with what happened, I think ordering the dog to have a muzzle with a person in the back, um I I just think that's extreme.
Can, I would like to hear animal control officer's opinion, but Jen, if you will.
I think if the dog is secure on their property and with a reasonable adult, with a with an appropriate adult, not reasonable necessarily, but with an appropriate adult um on leash or even on a runner that is appropriate for a dog, you know, the runners that go from tree to tree that's appropriate for a dog of its size, that there would be no need to muzzle the dog on their property. And certainly they have acres and acres of property there, if they're walking their dogs on their back acres, I wouldn't expect her to have to be muzzled during that walk. I think that's a little excessive, that means she lives her life in a muzzle every time she goes out to be.
I I a hundred percent agree with that and I I I don't see a need for it. Where my concern is, is if she's outside on the property, she should not be unattended. I don't, eh if, it's fine if she's on a leash or if she's on a runner, but there should be.
Somebody with her watching her.
An adult with them while they're, while she's outside.
Side.
Um so if it's just a matter of, you know, having a runner and you just put her on the runner to let her out, somebody has to be out there with her unless they're gonna fence.
If they had a fenced in area, would that be the same stipulation?
No, if there's a fenced in area where they can be contained, then I would say that's different issue.
Okay.
But I I would not be comfortable having her unsupervised, n- no muzzle is okay, but with adult supervision.
May I ask for a little bit clarification? If if the dog is outside without a per- without a person right there, sh- can she be, can she be outside without a person right there if she's obviously leashed tethered and has a muzzle on?
Uh.
Or are you saying this dog can only be outside with a person?
I'm, unless unless there's a fenced area that's contained, I would say that they require somebody to be with them outside.
What, I guess my concern is.
On a leash.
If you have a dog that is leashed with an owner and a muzzle or without an owner and it breaks free and goes after somebody, that's a whole different ballgame. That's not even nuisance anymore.
Yeah, that's a whole different dog.
So that's a whole different issue, so with somebody there with a muzzle and the dog wants to do that, I don't think the muzzle's gonna make much difference. If the dog's gonna go after somebody, it's gonna go after somebody whether it's a muzzle on or not. So and I agree with Jen, if it's a fenced in area, they can run, do whatever they wanna do as long as it's protected, you don't necessarily need a muzzle, because I think if a dog's gonna do something, muzzle ain't gonna change that. Personally, just keeps the dog from biting somebody but won't change their attitude about attacking anybody.
How does the board feel having, um it sounds like, I'm I I'm familiar with the property, I don't know where the dogs are currently leashed outside. Um but if they were leashed outside, no muzzle and an and a an adult, a a responsible adult had to be home and have eyes on them, maybe not necessarily right outside with them, but aware of them being out there. I'm I'm trying to think as far as trying to give the dogs opportunity to exercise as well as, which is ultimately gonna help probably in some of the anxiety piece, as well as being able to to get stuff done around the house. Um I can understand not just putting the dog out all day and leaving the dog out all day um and coming and going and whatever. But um it sounds um.
I'm right there by the window, I mean, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, I was just.
People keep saying on a theme, they're like, I'm right there, I have a picture of my work setting or whatever, like right, my table, computer, laptop, like I'm actually watching them, if I see them wanna bark, I call their name and they kinda calm down. It's not like, you know, during those fifteen minutes, my internet is, my wifi internet unfortunately don't get enough to the back. And that's just in the morning, like in the afternoon, they're never, you know, my daughter is running around there and we're all there in the afternoon doing by the fire pit, which is like people can't see. I guess you get misunderstood when you up the hill, you can see the dogs, you don't see no one, that's another misunderstood. Then like we are there, we're just, no, right next to them, I mean, I wanna pray for my dogs too, a little bit. Know that I'm being an irresponsible adult and just leaving them.
You've answered.
Going, yeah.
Just, how, I mean, how does the board feel about something of knowing that the dogs are, and and Jen, I don't know how you feel if that's a reasonable, if that's reasonable or not. I I don't think that they should be muzzled, to your point, outside, um.
On the property.
On the property, I do think that they should be contained on the property, um but.
I mean, to play devil's advocate, I've had dogs go over and under fences.
Right.
So, you know, just to play devil's advocate in that regard. Um I've very rarely seen one get off a a tethered run. Um as long as they have the appropriate collar or harness or something on, you know, they're not, they're not get, they're not getting anywhere. So I feel that they had, again, an appropriate run for that, they sell dog runs and that's what, you know, they're, that's what they're intended for. I'm not talking about a makeshift clothesline, I'm talking about an, you know, appropriate dog run, tethered appropriately to a structure or a tree that it's not removing. And putting your dog out for ten to fifteen minutes and, you know, running inside is not inappropriate. Um again, like as pointed out, this is a, this was a, this was a terrible incident and I'm not minimizing it, as we've all said, in any way. Um this is not the dog that is lunging at the door to go after somebody, lunging at the end of a rope, that's going after me through a chain link fence. This is a, this is a grab and go, this is a dog that is probably protective, probably anxious, a hurting type breed with a little bit of a prey drive that saw somebody running by, ran after that person, kinda gave it a grab, whether it was to hurt her or get her away, herd, not hurt, get her away from the property. Would, and again, not excusable because the dog shouldn't have been given the opportunity to do so. But this isn't the dog that is is straining at the end of its leash, this isn't, this isn't Cujo from the nineteen eighties film, you know, this is not that dog. Um if this dog was that dog that was pulling on the end of a leash and aggressively trying to go after somebody, you know, that would be a very different story. If this dog became that dog and tried to pull on a tether to go after somebody running by, we'd have a very different hearing.
Alright, then then I, for me personally, I'd be comfortable allowing the runner, assuming appropriate collar, martingale collar, something that they can't slip out of.
It's a bottle.
Um as part of enforcement of that, are you able to go inspect whatever is installed?
Once it's installed, yep, once it's installed.
To verify?
And that provides the dogs to have some opportunity to run and play and exercise and provide the family. And that provides the dogs to have some opportunity to run and play and exercise and provide the family some opportunity to not.
Right, and to muzzle this dog constantly outside would be a disservice to the dog as far as even its mental state.
Yes, I agree.
Do you have that attorney, Corbo?
Yeah, so Amber will not be left outside unless she is on a secure runner or within a fenced in enclosure.
Yep.
Okay, and just through you, Madam Chair.
Sorry. Sorry, if we could also add that I I personally would feel more comfortable if there was a, an a, like a responsible adult home while the dogs are outside, whether it's on the runner or or not. And maybe that's a pet sitter if it's or whatever, but just that there's a.
Yeah, the dog should never be outside if if an adult's not home.
I mean, yeah, I think that's kind of, especially if it's unmuzzled, right? Like, yeah.
I mean, I don't know if there are other children in the household that I don't I don't even.
She's got a daughter that's twelve.
Well, and and I just, I I mean, for the children in the home, I don't think it's reasonable to expect them to be able to handle
Yeah, she's busy.
The dogs, it should be the adults, yes.
Okay, so then that one would say that the dog will not be left outside unless it is on an appropriate dog run or fenced enclosure and not unless an adult is home at the time.
With the runner being approved by the ACO.
Yes, okay. Okay. Uh, so are we good with that?
Do we wanna put any timeline on installation for that? Is that necessary?
I think it's, she can't be out essentially until, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, that to me, that's up to them. If they want to leash walk their dog for the next six months and not tire out, that's that's up to them, you know, if they want the convenience of having it, then they'll install it.
Um, and Madam Chair, through you to the animal control officer. Can you explain to the owner perhaps outside of the hearing what the difference is between this dog run and the the, you know, the stake that's in the ground or or tethering the dog to some other inanimate object?
Yeah, well, certainly, I'll certainly be in touch with them.
Um, so are there other questions about this or should we move on?
I think we can move on.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, and so this, I also lumped together a few for this next one to say that the owner will maintain within the home a holding room and crate for the dog. She shall install and maintain on both the front and back doorways, internal gates to prevent the dog from accessing the doorways, and she shall post a beware of dog sign on the door.
The only thing, if I may, I I made a mistake on the holding crate because I saw it in a picture. There was a holding crate, but that was for the smaller dogs. So I I don't know that a holding crate, I I misinterpreted what I was seeing in the picture. I don't know that a holding crate is even a thing for a bigger dog unless the vet or the trainer recommends it.
I mean, my dogs are crate trained, my, I have bigger dogs and they're crate trained, but they also have a room that's dedicated to them that is essentially similar to their crate. So they have their crate and they have, so.
In my my personal opinion, I don't care how they keep their dogs inside their house as long as they can't get out of it.
Right.
Is the doors, if the doors, if there's a catchment area at both the doors and the dogs can't access the doors, they don't have to crate their dog if they don't choose to.
And I think maybe working with the trainer, Stephanie might be able to provide some tools to help manage if it's calming, you know, calming space or her space to to calm, it's calm or whatever, but I think.
Yep, I agree.
If as long as the.
As long as, I think as long as that catchment area is at the door and the dog can't access the door, the dog can't, again, live in the crate, so it's it's if they would choose to crate their dog and it may be great for her anxiety, anxiety, it may be terrible for her anxiety. But if they don't choose to crate their dog in their house, as long as their dog can't access the doors, I I don't think it's relevant.
And especially because it sounds like in some ways this was an accident because the dog was able to get
Out the door.
Of a door, and so if we can put measures in place to to ensure that we can minimize that risk as much as possible.
Yeah, yeah, I, being the type of dog it is, I I would tend to feel that by crating the dog, you're just creating more anxiety for the dog. And you're creating an instance where once you let the dog out, maybe compounded. So I I just don't think a crate is necessary at this point. As long as the house is protected, they can't get out.
Attorney Corbo, are you comfortable kind of rewarding that to ensure that the there's a catchment at the exits and entrances and exits? And then as far as the beware of dog sign, on the house is a, is the front of the house, it's kind of the the front of the property. It sounds like when the dogs are outside contain on on a a run or whatever, they're in the back kind of behind the visible part of from from the road, so anybody coming up, um, do we, does the board want additional signage kind of at the start of a property on either side as if there's runners or walkers to be aware or or not?
I guess my question is, if you have a sign that's very visible from the road and they can see that sign, beware of dog or we have dog, whatever, that I don't see that putting out three, four or more signs would do any good at all.
I agree.
But that's my personal opinion.
No, that's fine. I wanted to.
No, I agree.
I wanted to get that feedback. So Attorney Corbo, are you comfortable with kind of the the that piece?
Um, so just one sign on the, somewhere on the house, visible from the street?
I think that's kind of the consensus of the board.
I know that property and the roads are very, very long and it can be open. So I guess maybe one side of traffic coming this way and then a sign at the other end of the property for traffic coming this way. So there are two signs, you can see it from either direction that's very clear. Does not be, you know, that's, I guess, not to be overkill. I just, you know, I I I wanna make sure that people on that road understand there are dogs there. If they wanna run, if they wanna walk, that's their, that's their issue then, okay, that there are dogs there.
Can I say something? Am I allowed to?
About the signs, I I appreciate the like effort with the signs, but you don't get to claim the road because you have a dog. Like, it's not, it's not up to the runner to say, oh, there's a dog, I can't go this way. I may choose to do that, given the trauma I've experienced from this, but I don't think putting a sign out is fair to the public.
Well, and that's, I I think that's one of my questions to your point is I think that it's on the house maybe just to notify people that if they are coming up to the house that there's
Delivery person.
A dog, you know, but how much notice, I I don't know. That's what I wanted the conversation for the board a little bit.
It it feels to me like it's putting the responsibility on the passerby, and it shouldn't be.
So if I, if I understand this, a sign would would not be a good thing? Or or is?
What is the purpose?
I I think when you look normally, you'll see a lot of dog signs on the house, beware of dog. And I think it's it's letting the public know that we have dogs here. We have, my wife is afraid of cats. You put a beware of cat sign there, she's on the other side of the road, okay? But at least she knows that there are cats there. If she walks by and one comes out, she won't freak out. So that's all I'm saying about the signs, is to let people know that if the sign is there, they can still walk by, but it's not, it's not telling them they can't. It's just giving them information, there are dogs there. And it's nothing about an attack. My wife is very paranoid about about cats, believe it or not. So that's all they're doing, in my opinion, but.
So I think I think the board's, it seems like consensus, Attorney Corbo, is the board is in favor of signs just at least to notify the public that there are dogs there.
On the premises.
On the premises. Yep.
Okay, so the owner will install and maintain internal gates at the front and back door to prevent direct access to doorways. And she will post two beware of dog signs on the property, both visible from the street for travelers going in each direction.
I think, is the board comfortable with that? Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Sure, okay, just the next one. I'm not sure if this was on their list, but I put this in 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 response to one of the issues that was raised in the report, and that is that the owner will keep the dog current on all vaccines and licensing requirements.
I I agree with that, and I think maybe we could lump that in with establishing the relationship with the Massachusetts vet and consider medication as as deemed necessary or as and I would envision that being a little bit with the trainer, consultation with the trainer as well as the vet.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
If I may, does the ACO have any input on regarding medications? Or the mass vet? I mean, what's your experience?
I honestly don't, I mean, one, not being a veterinarian, and two, not knowing the dog well enough. I know some dogs do very well with anti-anxiety meds. Some dogs do well with CBD thistings, some dog, you know, just, but again, not not having that degree and not, again, not knowing this dog on much, a very personal level. I mean, I've met her for ten minutes, so I I couldn't, I wouldn't be comfortable.
Through the chair, follow up? Would that be something that you would then rely on the trainer?
The trainer and the veterinarian.
Veterinarian?
Yeah, I mean, the trainer can certainly give advice in that regard, but the veterinarian's gonna know, if we're talking medication, a veterinarian's gonna be most helpful in that regard.
Does the client have any association with a mass vet now?
Uh, yes, I do.
Yes.
Yes, I do. Sorry, I can't be allowed now. I guess vetco.
Vetco.
Yeah.
Veterinary.
Okay.
So Attorney Corbo, I think I I personally one hundred percent agree with the licensing and vaccination requirements as well as I was trying to kind of lump in that veterinary piece and consider medication, knowing that it might not be the the appropriate route, but that to me is establishing a relationship with the vet.
Yeah, and I I wouldn't recommend requiring medication, um, because really none of us are qualified to make that decision. But I I would suggest saying that the owner will keep the dog current on vaccine and licensing requirements and establish a relationship with a Massachusetts veterinarian to consider medication.
Yep.
Okay.
Is that reasonable, is the board?
I I was gonna say even just leaving it up to the vet and striking the consider medication. I mean, she's an Australian shepherd, they're they're high strung, and there could be absolutely nothing.
Yeah, I mean, it's. High strung dogs.
Yeah.
It's just the breed demeanor, so I would even consider striking the consider medications piece. Just leave it up to the vet and the trainer to determine what's best.
I'm comfortable taking it out. I just wasn't sure what the, so to me, it's more establishing the relationship with the vet so the vet can get to know the dog and the licensing vaccination requirements.
Um, if I may, is it reasonable to request as part of this, the spay as well? Just I I know if there is some sort of behavioral issue, that there are genetic components to that, that we want to make sure that there's no.
Um, yes, you can, yes, require that that the dog be fixed. And that's something you're you're authorized to do. If you are going to do that, I would just, again, put some sort of timeframe on it so we can, you know, confirm that it's done.
Is there any thoughts on?
That's a tough one for me, Jen. I'm not sure where I would go with that. I guess, yes, we know that particular breed. I mean, I I've got family that own Australian Razorbacks. So, I mean, that's, so I don't know what, she bought this from a breeder, so I'm not sure I understand what, quote, having fixing the dog would do in this situation for this particular dog. So I I I don't know if I can, I can't wrap my head around that, so maybe you can.
I I I just, I think it's more just as I I think for me, my opinion is being a responsible dog owner, unless there's an agreement with a breeder that the dog will be used for breeding purposes, or there's some medical reason why they can't be fixed. There shouldn't be a reason that they aren't.
So I think some of that's a conversation with the vet also.
With the vet.
Um, if we're saying we're striking the consider medication part, then I think, you know, I think Massachusetts is very much pro altering animals, and that's great, but I think that it needs, should, personally, it should be a conversation with the veterinarian and not.
Okay.
And just for information, the other dogs on the property are not intact. They've been spayed or neutered.
She's the only intact. Thank you. So we'll strike that, Attorney Corbo?
Okay. All right, and then the last thing that I have is insurance. And I would suggest using the wording in the statute, that is, the owner or keeper provide proof of insurance in an amount not less than one hundred thousand dollars, insuring the owner or keeper against any claim, loss, damage or injury to persons, domestic animals or property resulting from the acts, whether intentional or unintentional of the dog, or proof that reasonable efforts were made to obtain such insurance if a policy has not been issued. And again, I would suggest putting a a timeframe on that.
And in someone else's experience, what's a reasonable timeframe for this? Are we thinking like three months, six months? Are we thinking, or if it's.
If I may ask, that often, because normally a homeowner's or renter's insurance policy is already in place and covers that.
Right.
Uh, if I may, in here it says seeking a dog, are you already in the process of looking at a liability insurance policy?
So they have renters' insurance, and most renters' insurance cover dog bites, but we'll look at the policy. So if 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 it doesn't, you can get a standalone policy too, and she'll look into that.
And you, they would do that, get a standalone policy.
Oh, yeah, they would, they would look, see, look at it.
Compliant, okay, okay.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's any other, like any other insurance, it's a phone call, so it shouldn't take six months to get.
Right, right.
Right, but I also.
I know most insurance agents will be glad we do write policy.
And I'm also trying to be reasonable that there's, that there's expenses, that there's a lot of expenses that they've incurred, that they have incurred and are going to continue to incur, so I wanna be reasonable that, and be successful, like, and not destiny. So I don't, what's the board's kind of wish for that timeframe? Do we wanna say by the end of the calendar year? Do we wanna say by certain?
I agree with Jen, we should be able to notify a week or two if there's a policy out there they can get. It shouldn't take six months for them to to look at that, a couple of phone calls.
I mean, I I understand where Lee is coming from as far as the expenses that would be incurred due to this. Playing devil's advocate, you own a dog, there's expenses that go with it. And when things come up, whether you need to have additional training, you need to be prepared for what you might need to financially expend to handle whatever comes up with regards to that dog. And I don't, I I'm willing to have, you know, not necessarily put a week timeframe on it, but I don't think six months is reasonable for incurring an insurance policy.
And the other thing is, it doesn't specify an MGL that it's required to have a separate policy. All it requires is proof of insurance, whether it be renters' insurance, that it meets the requirements of MGL. So that should be easy enough to.
It only requires that you make the effort to get the insurance. It doesn't require that you have the insurance.
Uh, the owner or keeper of the dog provide proof of insurance in amount not less than a hundred thousand. Insuring the owner or keeper against any claim or loss, et cetera, et cetera. Such insurance, if a policy has not been issued, provided whoever, that if the policy has been issued, the owner, keeper shall produce such policy upon request. So.
But it also says, it goes on.
And provided further, that if a policy has not been issued, the owner or keeper shall produce proof of efforts to obtain such insurance.
All right.
So.
If there's no policy available out there, they have done the effort.
Though you'll have a list, here's everything they, everybody they went to, things like that.
Yeah, okay.
So is, are we, one month, is that, what's the board timeframe, a month?
I mean, I think that's reasonable to make phone calls and to, but I I think their renters' insurance, like I said, nine times out of ten, your renters' and homeowners' covers things like this, so.
You could probably add to renters' insurance. You could probably add to renters' insurance as well.
Or that's a caveat too, yeah, you can just add a, add a additional. Again, I mean, I understand the expense part too, I mean, it's it depends how reasonable some of these policies are, and that I don't know.
Do you have that, Attorney Corbo?
Um, no, I'm sorry, did we settle on a uh, timeframe?
I think a month.
One month, okay.
Month.
Okay, so that's all that I had on my list, members of the board, was there anything that you wanted to add?
Harry, Paul, Jen.
Um, you know, we've been sitting up here on the board and I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but uh, where we weren't the issue of the person who got bit, I guess I would like to hear from that person as to what they think they might feel should also be in this, if that's appropriate. And I'd have to ask the attorney if that is indeed appropriate.
Um, yes, the, you you have the ability to ask um, the person who was bitten or anyone else for advice um, as you make your decision.
Good.
Uh, thank you, I'm I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Is there anybody else, um, Attorney Cohen, any? I mean, I think most of the list, I appreciate the the work that you've done to kind of provide us with the guidance of the list and so having the conversation, I I appreciate that.
Thank you, we have no comments, uh, no additional comments.
I'm not interested in adding anything, I just wanna make a comment and say the whole purpose of us coming to this hearing, like, this is pretty traumatic for her. Coming here and even being questioned or being requested to be put on the spot is pretty traumatic for her, it's affected all of her running. Our only purpose was to prevent the next incident, and I think that these have covered that, so thank you.
And I wanna, I wanna take time and thank you, Laura Lynn, for coming out, I know it's not easy and and I, so I appreciate that and I appreciate answering kind of all of our probing questions and 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 rehashing that night, um, and I appreciate the the owners coming out as well and and providing that that input as well, but I know it's not an easy um, experience and so I very much appreciate, appreciate.
Through the chair, may I, like, let me comment? I I wanna thank everybody here in the audience for being very civil and handling this situation. It was difficult, it's tough, uh, and I I appreciate all the fair comments that were made and the feelings didn't get little out of control, so I do appreciate that, thank you.
Can I say one thing?
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yeah, sorry, Tom, we can hear you, we're still hashing out the um, conditions, I think we have a final list, we'll go through, I'll have Attorney Corbo go through them in just a minute.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanna say, these dogs are our family, we absolutely care about them, uh, but we also moved out here to Rutland because we wanna be a part of this community. We wanna be respectful in this community and help everybody out as much as we can, and so whatever we can do to make sure that we support this community by making the decisions, protecting our dogs, protecting those who run by, we're gonna make those steps and I can assure you that on our part, we're gonna put those efforts in place.
Thank you, and I I.
And we do apologize, we definitely did not wanna traumatize you at all, uh, that was an error on our part and that won't happen again.
And I do just wanna thank everyone's um, participation tonight because um, I I this, thank goodness, we don't have a lot of dog hearings in Rutland, um, but this has been one of the more civil ones and very kind of pointed and it's clear that you care very deeply about Amber and and your other dogs. You you hired an attorney and have been working, um, taking some of those proactive steps already, um, and Laura Lynn, it's clear that you care about the community and you really are looking out for yourself, but also, to your point, the rest of of the community, so I appreciate everyone's kind of participation in this, thank you. Attorney Corbo, do you mind going through the list? Um, Tom joined us on, he had to leave, but he's on Zoom now, so.
Um, yes, thank you, so through you, Madam Chair, um, what I can do is, um, I can read through the list in the form of a of a motion and um, if someone is in agreement with that, they can say so moved, um, and we can go from there.
Perfect.
Okay, um. Um, okay, thank you, so um, I move based on the finding that the dog Amber is a nuisance dog, that the following conditions shall be imposed to ameliorate the nuisance. One, um, Amber will participate in the behavioral training course with Stephanie Duka, um, with the trainer to provide periodic updates at least every eight weeks, um, to show that the owner is following through and complying with the trainer's recommendations, um, until the trainer certifies that the dog has been sufficiently trained. Two, when removed from the premises of the owner, Amber will be securely muzzled with a basket-type muzzle and kept on a leash not exceeding six feet in length, um, the leash shall be held by a responsible adult capable of handling the dog and the person walking Amber will not walk any other dogs at the same time. Three, um, Amber will not be left outside um, on the property, um, unless she is secured on a dog run, is that right? Um, I'm sorry, not outside unless on an appropriate dog run or fenced enclosure, um, and not unless an adult is home at the time um, with the runner or enclosure to be improved by the animal control officer. Number four, um, the owner will install and maintain on the front and back doors internal gates to prevent direct access to the doorways and she shall post a beware of dog sign on the property visible from the street in two locations for travelers in each direction. Five, um, the owner will keep the dog current on all vaccine um, and licensing requirements and establish a relationship with a Massachusetts veterinarian. And finally, number six, um, within one month, the owner will provide proof of insurance in an amount not less than one hundred thousand dollars, insuring the owner against any claim loss, damage, or injury to persons, domestic animals, or property resulting from the acts, whether intentional or unintentional of the dog or proof that reasonable efforts were made to obtain such insurance if a policy has not been issued. So moved.
Tom, so moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second. I think Jen beat you out. Um, we will go to roll call, um, Paul.
I'm ready, Mattson, I.
Madra, I.
Yav, an I.
And White men, I, um, Harry just stepped out, so he is not here for the vote.
He was here so long.
I know. Um, thank you, Attorney Corbo, I appreciate your time, thank you, Attorney Cohen, um, Wayman's family, uh, Amber's family, um, thank you all. Thank you, Jen, for being out and assisting us, I really appreciate it, thank you. Um, so that concludes this part of our agenda.
So Madam Chair, I would suggest that you close the hearing.
Oh, I thought I had already.
Oh, you did, we did.
I did clo- I think I did close the hearing already.
Before the deliberation.
Before we did the deliberation, should I not have?
Well, well, you closed the evidentiary part of the hearing, but now that you've um, made a decision, you should close the entire hearing.
Okay. Okay, then I would accept a motion to um, close the the dangerous dog hearing for Amber at eighty Hillside Road.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Harry.
Second I.
Madra, I.
White man, I, Tom.
Yav, an I.
Sorry, Tom, okay, thank you, um, thank you, thank you all, thank you, thank you, Attorney Cohen.
You're welcome, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Just the medical documentation. Thank you.
And you got, I think you were just gonna.
Yes, yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I apologize, but I have to sign off.
I appreciate you having back on, thank you, Tom.
Thanks, guys, bye.
Thank you, bye.
I need to point out, um, Tamika, um, worked, I think it was Friday night or Saturday night, yeah, after hours, took my email and got me some information, so thank you, appreciate it, because we were tight on time.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, is there anyone here for public comment?
I have a different subject I'd like to bring up.
Is it on the agenda?
I do not know if it is or not.
So this is, this is the venue for it?
I think that this would be the venue for it then.
Okay.
Um, name an address, please.
My name's Joseph Warrington, sixty-nine Palm Gossett Road.
Yep.
Uh, I got concerns about uh, the dam and uh, what's gonna be going on, uh. I'm kinda got the brunt end of uh, all this stuff that's been coming down the road, my pond is no longer a pond, it's just kinda full of all the runoff that's come down from the road as well as the banking of Route fifty-six. Uh, it's all come down on my side, whatever went down on the other side went into the dam and came onto my property as well, so. Uh, my concern is I have uh, five outlets that my pond releases from. First one is a ten-inch pipe that's submerged at about six feet down, that's filters my pond and then I have another four-foot open section that's a round and that's my secondary. My third exit's a four-foot square. My fourth exit is a one-and-a-half-foot round pipe that goes onto Molton Road and my fifth exit is Molton Road. All that runs into one river that goes underneath Molton Road, which is a two-by-four pipe. I have plenty of access to exit my pond, but everything is running into one pipe that's running underneath Molton Road which has collapsed, it's no longer a four-by-four, it's a four-by-two. Uh, I understand that the buses are gonna be rerouted around Molton Road and I'm concerned that they may end up collapsing. And my concern is the silt in my pond is running downstream and where it's gonna end up is, my assumption is there's pond and from there, wherever else. Um, I don't know what the town's plan is on, on what they wanna do with the dam. You know, this is a temporary that they're gonna be doing or is this a permanent structure that they're putting in?
Uh, to, I just wanna be clear, so typically, public comment does not provide for the exchange, but in in terms of, because this is a project, I think that that's, there's been a lot of feedback on. Um, the repair or replacement is a permanent repair and replacement of the Molton Pond culvert. Um, I know you were present for the site visit with the engineers, Mass DOT, um, Department of Public Works. Um, this has been a project long in the works for several years now and it's been um, planned from the very beginning to give a permanent replacement. Um, just notes on uh, Molton, um, Molton Mill Road, is that Molton Mill Road? I was confused. Um, you are correct, in the in the beginning, it was the offer from Mass DOT and the town um, for school buses to utilize that. Um, the bus company has notified uh, Mass DOT and the town that they do not intend to use. Um, Molton Mill Road, just because it's not the greatest road, especially for large buses like that. Um, it is available for uh, public safety use, obviously, for specific reasons.
Yeah, pretty much just a one-lane road.
Yeah, um, but the police department is also um, asking folks, uh, members of the public not to utilize that just because of the condition of the road as well.
Yeah.
Uh, you um, probably were aware, uh, DPW did do some work just to try to clean it up a bit with the intent of, um, the bus companies using it, but obviously, they're they're not planning on using it, they're gonna take the detour like everyone else. Um, it's my also, it's my understanding as well, I I think we've probably been working with Conservation Commission on some of the cleanup.
Well, I've.
Necessary, so.
I've kinda been out of the loop because I've had multiple surgeries over the past year, so I'm I'm trying to get back into the loop right now.
Yeah, so I know that, I think the town through CONCOM also did receive some notification from DEP that they're aware of, um, some Tamika, sediment uh, issues, not only with that area uh, of the the pond and the dam, but also further downstream as well. Um, some of that of of course is just natural weather from, weather that's happened over the years, some of it, obviously, we had a really rainy July last summer. Some of it also will be impacted by um, the pending closure and the work associated with that, so. Um, and I know that you've had some communications with DOT to see if there's ways that they can mitigate some of the work there. I don't know if you've been successful in some of your conversations with them.
I I, my suggestion was that when they piped the water from one side to the other, that they could pipe the water from one side over my waterfall and then they could do whatever they want with the pond, they can put it back to its natural state. And that would be extending the pipe maybe another fifty yards, maybe. And that way there, the water wouldn't even go through my pond and they could get all that silt out and remove all that problematic and they would, that that would be the solving of all the problem.
Yeah, it's a challenging spot, as the board is aware, it's a, just a challenging spot, probably from the very beginning. Um, I mean, you're at the bottom of both hills, right, so.
Well, everything. And everything runs on my side, it doesn't go into, it doesn't go into Molton Pond, everything runs onto my side, which my pond is only like a quarter acre and it's no longer a pond, it's only like a, when it fills up, it's only a foot deep. And eventually, I'm gonna, the water's gonna end up going over, you know, if if my pipe blocks up my my main drain, you know, that's it's, I got six feet of silt in there that's accumulated over the oh, in the years I I bought the property, in five years, I've lost three feet of of pond in depth. Partially because the road wasn't paved for whatever it was last year and everything came down from the road and everything came down into my so a big portion of it was over the past two years and the rest of it was the accumulation over the past forty years because everything came down a road into a pipe at the top of my property and came down into my river. And then whatever went into the other side went directly into the dam and into my so this has been going on for several years, accumulated by what they did last year before they paved the road. Everything came down, every time that we had that rain, everything was filtering right into the pond.
I mean, it sounds like Mass DOT is aware, CONCOM is aware, um, we are aware now, so thank you for coming in and um, it's on our radar and as the project progresses, um, yeah, like I said, I think.
I have mentioned it over the course of many years and nobody seems, everybody's worried about the pond on the other side, which the pond on the other side can handle anything that's gonna go into it. But my side, where everything, I'm getting the brunt end of everything, because nothing goes into the pond over there, everything is coming into my side because of the tilt of the road.
If I may ask, what's, when you say everything, what do you mean by that? Tree stumps, boulders, silt?
Well, the the banking for Route fifty-six used to be like a forty-five, it's almost like a ninety-degree now because the whole banking has washed down into my side of the the river. On the other side, they removed all the barriers that covered the dam. Now, whatever runs onto the other side runs directly into the channel right through underneath the road into my side, so it's it's not just one side, it's both sides. Because they removed everything, because the the hole underneath the road is filled with debris, so they had to remove all the wood blocks on top of the dam. So it's totally exposed now, so every time a rain comes, which comes down the road and it goes down into the dam, or it goes right into my river, into my pond.
Would fixing the dam solve that problem? Would you get more more dam flow out, so it wouldn't?
Yes, it may fix the problem, but it's not gonna fix the problem I have, it's not gonna eliminate the damage that has been done. I want the damage to be fixed, I'm I'm hoping that the dam will solve the problem of the runoff that's gonna be coming down, but the runoff that has caused over the past several years is what I'm trying to deal with.
Okay.
As well as the two-foot squished pipe underneath Molton Road, I have, like I said, five exits for water to go out of into one river. That one river goes underneath Molton Road. When they released the dam several times, the water came up to just about going over Molton Road because it couldn't go o- it couldn't go through that pipe. It ended up backing up into my basement and I had six feet of water in my basement.
Okay. Okay.
Because it couldn't go through that two-by-four pipe.
Do we know if that pipe is gonna be fixed on Molton Road?
Uh, I would have to talk further, I think, with D P W and, uh, the director, but um, you know, any sort of pipe structure has to go through a design process and needs to be, um, vetted through, obviously, CONCOM and regu, other regulatory agencies, especially since that water is going into watershed property, we'll have to work with D E P.
Will the state be involved in that then?
Very, very much so.
Okay.
Um, you know, and even the work that's associated, if he wanted to do work on his pond on his property, they, they're involved with that as well. Um, they're pretty much involved with everything they want to. Um, but also I just wanna remind, obviously, the community that there's this is also one of the reasons why we established a stormwater enterprise fund, um, to actually have a dedicated funding source for this kind of infrastructure work. Um, the, um, pipe or culvert, whatever you wanna call it that's on Molton Mill is just one of the dozens, if not more than that, um, pieces of infrastructure that are long overdue for repair or replacement.
I don't know if that helps, Mr. Warrington at all?
Well, I, I've
But at least we heard you.
Yeah. Um, well, there's a lot of some heavy equipment going over on Molton Road, cause they, they do some storage of some heavy trucks on, uh, on non-pro, on the property. And that pipe is getting squished, and, you know, if it does end up like I said, it's only a two-by-four, and right now that's not enough distance for all the water to go through. And we get a heavy rain, it's gonna end up washing out Molton Road, as well as gonna end up backing into my basement again. And if I get five feet of water in my basement, before I, I, I could accept it, now I can't, because I got new equipment down there. I got new heating systems down there. I, I, I can't have that problem happen again.
Okay.
So, it's on our radar, and Austin will talk to our D P W director and get it, you know, see where it falls and what can be done, whether it's state or or the town.
Okay.
Um, unfortunately, I think you probably are aware, historically, the town hasn't been kinda very proactive in replacing culverts or anything. It has to essentially be a complete failure. Um, and to Austin's point, as far as establishing the stormwater utility is to, to try to address things before it becomes a failure and is an emergency fix, that we can have some proactive, um, and knowing that it's gonna be more than, than only the, um, town and CON, and CONCOM, that it's likely gonna involve, um, the state and D E P and everything also, um, to at least get it on everyone's radar sooner rather than later.
Cause my fifth exit is actually Molton Road. They actually raised that road up a foot. Before, it was just a total opening, like a five-foot opening, six-foot opening. But they raised the road a foot and just put in a eighteen-inch pipe. So the eighteen-inch pipe will be sufficient, unless we get a real heavy, heavy rain, that end up going right down Molton Road.
Okay.
And then eventually go around the back into my river, and then it'll end up washing out Molton Road. It's only a matter of time.
Thank you for coming in, and thank you for staying for public comment, I appreciate you spending the night, thank you.
Okay. Okay, okay. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay.
Take care.
Thank you. Moving on, we have communication member comments, announcements, and town administrator update. I will be super brief and just welcome everyone back to school. I think almost all the schools are back in session. Um, welcome back, good luck to all the students and teachers and staff, have an amazing year. Um, and please be mindful for the school bus drivers, um, the school and the walkers, all the students. Um, I appreciate everyone's cognizance of that. Um, uh, primary election day was yesterday, I wanna thank the election workers. Um, long day, I think the polls were open seven A M. to eight P M. Um, and there were a lot of write-ins, so they had extra long nights and probably still very busy days, um, today and moving forward. So, thank you to everyone that made that a, a successful day. Um, and Austin, I will turn it over to you. Anybody else have any, um, announcements or comments?
Um, I wanna thank Tamika for sending out that notice about Donna Sauls.
Oh, wow.
Okay, that was very sad to hear. Very, I knew Donna for a long time, so, very sad, thank you.
I have some comments, but it might be, come up in Austin's updates, so.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, just also wanna echo, um, the chair sentiments. Uh, wanna thank, uh, Town Clerk, uh, Neil Carlson, and Assistant Town Clerk, uh, Ben Brachian, and all the election workers and volunteers for their uh, well, this is just the very beginning of a very busy election season, right? Um, they processed several hundred advanced, early voting ballots, and then the, the folks that showed up on Election Day. Um, and then obviously similar requirements from the state with early voting and everything else. It's, it's the craziest time of the year for election staff, so I just wanna thank them for their work. Um, just a couple of updates, uh, included in your packet. Um, as folks are aware, the, um, closure of Palmegusset Road will begin September ninth. Um, this is with respect to the, um, replacement and repair of Molton Mill Pond Dam. They're replacing that with a, a box culvert. Um, the initial project scope included a two-to-three-month closure of Palmegusset Road. D O T had indicated, um, that they'll be working, um, I believe it's seven days a week, twelve-hour days, um, to accelerate this project to, um, approximately a three-week closure. Um, this is fairly significant project, obviously there's a lot of work there, um, installing a portable dam, clearing out all the debris, clearing out, uh, the roadway and everything else, and then quite literally dropping in a box culvert there. Significant infrastructure project. Um, to be condensed into a three-week closure is, um, very ambitious. I think we received some comments from structural engineers and even other state agencies that it's very ambitious. Um, but, um, uh, D O T and, uh, Marais, uh, as well as some of the other subcontractors have committed to, um, actively working on this, um, twelve hours a day. Uh, we've obviously received some feedback about the closure. Uh, we have published some information on the town website, as well as the police department page, um, as well as our social media pages. There's a frequently asked questions document available online, um, based off of some of that feedback. Um, I think as we get some more questions, we, um, will obviously update that as well. Um, any questions on that, before I go to the other?
That was in the Central Tree Times too, right?
It was, which, that's my next update.
I thought I read it there, okay, sorry.
Yeah. Um, thank you for the lead-in, Harry. Um, very proud to announce, we, uh, have published our very first municipal newsletter for the town of Rutland. Um, after an extensive public feedback and some, I think some voting, um, we chose the name Central Tree Times. Um, I wonder why? Um, we'll be continuing to publish this on, on a monthly basis, uh, towards the beginning of each month. Um, wanna make sure that we engage with town departments, uh, and boards and committees for updates. This was a, I think, a six-page newsletter that had some pretty good updates on various topics. Um, it's our intent to continue this and, and just expand it even more. Um, just a reminder, if, if you subscribe to the town newsflash, you will be able to see not only updates when the newsletter is published, but any other important updates. So if we put out something with, with respect to the fifty-six closure, um, or anything else, you can receive instant updates to, um, your email, um, and also you can receive actually text updates from that as well. Um, Town Accountant, uh, Donna Kuchar has unofficially closed the books, meaning that she's just, actually she spent the entire weekend working for the town of Rutland, so I wanna thank her for her work, um, and is preparing the free cash submission to D O R. Um, I don't wanna give those numbers in a meeting, but initial unaudited results are a very, very healthy free cash balance, um, for the general fund, uh, more than last year. Um, so I just wanna thank Donna for her work, but also, um, town departments, as a part of that free cash, is a significant amount of turnback. So I wanna thank them for their fiscal prudence this year. Um, the assessor's office has, uh, opened applications for the town senior work-off program. Uh, just a reminder, this is an opportunity for residents, uh, ages sixteen older to receive an abatement on their property taxes. Uh, the abatement is seven hundred and fifty dollars per year. Um, applications are available in the town assessor's office. Um, I think they'll also be published shortly on the town website. Um, this year was an expanded year, or actually last year was an expanded year. Um, approximately ten individuals, um, ten seniors can receive, uh, the abatement, and then there's also an additional abatement of ten veterans that can receive abatement.
Wow. The, um, what, can you just highlight the requirements for getting there, like, what do you have to do? You gotta put in twenty hours of service to the town or?
Yeah, so I can't remember the service required, it's, it's spelled out in the application, but there's, uh, certain amount of hours that you have to work, and maybe Tamika knows them.
It equates to about fifty hours, it equates to about fifty hours' worth of work based on the hourly wage to get you to the seven hundred and fifty dollar abatement.
Yeah, and it's, I think it's about a minimum wage
Yeah.
opportunity that gets you to the seven hundred and fifty.
So it's not union wage?
Oh, yeah.
No.
No, sir. There's no benefits.
Oh, yeah. But, you know, so it's, and it's, it doesn't, um, I think various departments have utilized it. So for example, planning and building department used, um, an individual who did a lot of filing and cleanup of some of the files in, in those departments. Um, public safety's have used it, um, for some, I guess, additional paperwork. Counseling agent can, uh, utilizes their services. So, um, essentially you kinda put in like a job application, if you will, um, and kinda list your interests and your skills, and then, uh, the assessor's office and, and, uh, we kind of identify a good department to work with.
I was kinda thinking of the library in terms of the outlook, the look at the outside of the library, what could be done there for somebody if they were, had a heart, a heartocultural.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you gonna volunteer?
Hey, I might, I got
There you go.
I got free
Right.
Yeah, right. Okay, thank you.
So, and of course, any questions, please feel free to reach out to the assessor's office, and, um, if you want an application, you can, um, access that there.
Okay.
Uh, we did send out the capital improvement, uh, plan manual to town departments a few weeks ago. A project request which includes updating previous year requests, um, is due to my office by, um, Friday, September twentieth. Um, looking to, uh, compile these requests and send it off to the capital improvement planning committee for their review. Uh, we have already received the schools F Y twenty-six requests. Um, there's only two projects that were approved by school committee and the capital subcommittee. Um, just wanna put this out there. Um, nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars for, uh, repair, or actually full replacement of the three parking lots at the schools.
At our schools.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, at the three Rutland schools. Um, and then also a hundred, don't quote me on this, I'm gonna round up and say a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to start replacing the V C T, uh, the carpet with V C T tile at Naqog Elementary School. Um, I have some feedback on the parking lot. I have some feedback on the parking.
We can talk about that, okay.
Um, and then finally, just an update on the regional trash initiative. Uh, actually had an update today with Mass D E P and, um, towns of Hubbardston and Princeton. Um, we were initially planning a, um, informational session with potential haulers for September nineteenth. Mass D E P, apparently this is a busy year for trash. Um, I don't know why. Um, they've, uh, requested, um, an extension or a delay to that meeting to the following month. I have a date, I think it's October thirtieth. Um, hosted, it will be a virtual chat with potential haulers in each of the three communities. Um, more so to just kinda seek their feedback on, you know, what types, you know, if they would be interested in the regional trash program, um, and what type of stipulations that they would be comfortable with. One of the challenges that we have, or other communities have had with putting out this, um, kinda bid package is sometimes, I think the towns have a vision that doesn't necessarily fit what the private sector has. So oftentimes, R F Ps will come back with no responses. So for example, town of Princeton, um, put out an R F P several years ago, and the only response they received was one, and it was their brochure, that was it. Um, just because the program wasn't competitive and the R F P was a little too restrictive. So we just wanna make sure that we're engaging with the private sector, um, local businesses to make sure that this is an attractive opportunity for them, um, and ultimately makes sense for the residents. So, um, more coming on that. Hubbardston has received a technical assistance grant, that's why Mass D E P and how Mass D E P is assisting us in this initiative. Um, so right now we're kind of in a holding pattern until we have that informational session with the haulers next month. And that's all I have for updates, happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Austin. Um, does anyone have questions?
Yeah, just an, an issue that, I, I don't, it's appropriate this time. How are we doing looking for another human resource person?
Um, so, we'll talk a little bit more about that, I think, in executive session tonight, but, um, I think with some opportunities that have come up, and again, we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about that tonight. I think we also have a new treasurer collector, um, and some additional staffing in the treasurer collector's office, so, um, reallocating some of the human resources functions and some of the benefits and payroll functions to existing staff. Um, and then kind of absorbing some of the day-to-day H R that was handled by the previous director. So right now there is not an intent or a plan, also just again, mindful of our budget situation. Um, there's not an intent right now to re-advertise the H R position.
Okay.
Um, Harry has one of my questions. Um, the other one, probably more of a comment, I know you're aware, Austin, I have no qualms about replacing sidewalks at the schools. I would really like to know, I, I am not in favor of replacing parking lots in their current state. They need a redesign. Uh, spending money to repave the parking lot down at Glenwood that nobody uses as a parking lot is an absolute waste of money. So I would just like to see some information on what they plan to do if there's any sort of redesign. And I think that's something that we should heavily consider if we're putting that kind of financial investment into that.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so, um, on this type of project, the town would actually be responsible for the procurement. Um, so we'd be kind of in control of this
Okay.
from the very beginning.
Okay.
So, yeah.
You know, there's other smaller projects, like, so for example, the, you know, just on the Glenwood, uh, the playground, um, eighty-eight service replacement. Um, the way procurement thresholds actually work, it's actually easier for the schools to do it. So the sixty thousand dollars that was allocated, um, is actually easier for the schools, and they've agreed to handle that procurement on our behalf. Uh, but bigger items, like millions of dollars, I think it's best for the town, especially while they maintain to be town buildings, especially for the town to be in control of that.
When you say the schools, you're talking like Glenwood, for example, uh, is putting out to bid themselves for the, that, or what you said?
No, so the school district would.
Okay.
Um, very similar to what was done with the emergency, um, boiler repair at Naqog last year.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we handled the emergency procurement, but the scheduling and everything else was through the school district, and then we just paid the bill.
Okay. How is that going?
It's still following, sorry, if I'm, it's still following appropriate procurement law and procedures.
Correct.
It's just the
I haven't, I haven't driven by Glenwood, how's that going for the, uh, school down, I mean, for the playground?
I don't believe they've started it yet.
Okay.
Um, but I know that, that's something that they're actively working on. I had a conversation last week with the facilities director, and I think he's on it.
One more thing, I, when I was driving by Naqog and people were picking up their kids, I noticed everybody was coming out, making a right turn, basically. Are the parking spaces all lined out down there now, the fifty? Have we done that yet, or?
Yeah, so, um, turns out there's a little bit more than fifty, let's just say, um, the parking spaces are a little tighter than normal.
Um, so drive a small car?
You're like, you're like downtown Sterling.
Yeah, so if you drive Tamika's car.
If, if you drive anything other than a sedan, you're not gonna find that parking spot.
Very tight. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, but you know, that's, but, you know, that was obviously a pilot initiative to see if it works. There's a lot of feedback in terms of already, I think, the police department and D P W are thinking about some ways, cause there's still some people that are going the wrong way down.
I was just gonna say that, that might be more something I can check in with Nick on, but I might, just got a picture from my husband tonight at soccer practice over there, and there's still people there's a sign up there, I know there's a sign up there right now. So I don't know if it's because they think it's after hours that they can still come down and park the wrong way. I just
Yeah.
I, I know, um, sorry, I know we did social media push and everything, but I wonder if, um, it can go out, and I'm not sure, because my kids aren't in any of the sports leagues, if the sports leagues can send a note to all the parents essentially with the same map
Reinforcing it, yeah.
and reinforcing that that's now one way coming in from Central Tree and out through Naqog. Um, because
It has gone out in the newsletter from the schools to the parents.
Yeah.
But, I'm talking about the, like, baseball, soccer, like, the, the Rutland Little League and softball and, um, Rutland U Soccer, and even Mountain, um.
Mountain so, yeah, Mountain Soccer Club.
Mountain so, yeah, Mountain, Mountain Club. Um, because some of those kids might not be kids that attend Rutland schools.
Yeah.
Um, but their kids are playing sports in Rutland. Um, or, or, or even parents or fan, you know, um, care providers that aren't, or parent or parents or something.
Mm-hmm.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just trying to think, because if it's after hours, then it's probably not the I do.
But that, that brings a good point, though, if there's, um, I know there's games down there too, so I don't know if that's something that's been But that that brings a good point, though. If there's um, I know there's games down there too, so I don't know if that's something that's been circulated to other towns in the area.
Yeah, I don't know. I can I can check and see if it was.
If it's even necessary, but just.
Yeah.
But I think it that would just go through the through the leagues, I would think, and then ask them to disseminate appropriate information to their.
As a courtesy, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, definitely some of it, I think, is gonna be, it's not the right phrase, but like muscle memory, like just, cause I'm I'm guilty of it. I almost cut through there the other day and I had to turn around and
Right, nice.
Mm-hmm.
Remember that it's not.
Yeah.
I can't go that way, so.
So the parking spaces are lawfully sized?
For perpendicular parking.
Yeah, well.
Or parallel parking.
Oh.
You know, let's just say if you were parking in the town hall parking lot, um but parallel is a little bit larger.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Uh by the way, Jen, thank you for that comment on uh, you know, the parking lots. We really, you know, use the term putting lipstick on a pig. That's all you're doing. If 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 there's a problem there with the construction, CIPC, I'm I'm glad just from CIP standpoint, we'll know what to look into and what we also need to do because we don't wanna waste that kind of money.
Yeah.
Doing that, you know?
Um anything else for the town administrator? Moving into appointments and res- resignations, we have an appointment for the earthworks board, which I know has been a little bit of a concern for the remaining members.
Mm-hmm.
Um we have uh earthworks is currently appointed um from already existing town boards and commissions. Um I believe there's agri- representation from agricultural commission, uh conservation commission, board of health, a member at large and.
Planning board.
Planning board. And uh with Mr. Crane's resignation from Kongkong, he was the uh Kongkong appointed um earthworks board member. So Kongkong has um nominated uh Timothy Keen- Keenan from the conservation commission to be the the earthworks rep from Kongkong. Um we have a letter of um of interest. Um and uh so I would be willing to entertain a motion to appoint uh Timothy Keenan as the conservation commission member to earthworks board.
Is Mr. Keenan here or on?
He was in Kong- Kongkong earlier tonight, so I guess is not. No, he's no, he's not.
Well, then we can't really make a motion on that if he's not here. And we also according to have to have a representative from conservation here in order to follow protocol for having him appointed.
I believe the policy says that. I believe the policy says you have to have a recommendation from the the border committee, but I don't recall it. It says the 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 committee itself has to be present.
Yes, there there was also a scheduling conflict. Kongkong also had a meeting tonight.
Yeah.
Um I that I believe is now concluded, but.
I.
Both boards are meeting as well.
He could, he he could have come here after that. I'm just saying that that's what it says. Are we gonna make exception going forward every time we have somebody come in that isn't here, whatever, we're gonna, the board's gonna make an exception to a appointment.
So we'll hold it. We will prevent earthworks from doing business because they currently don't have a quorum and but we'll hold it and ask um Mr. Keenan to please um attend and probably have um uh the chair of Kongkong as well as the chair of earthworks to be here just to make sure.
Appreciate that chair.
I will.
Just to be, so because I don't think there's a quorum for earthworks, so and I think the previous chair.
No.
Resigned.
Resigned, so they don't have a chair?
Resigned, so the chair will not be in attendance. So I maybe if the board can waive that component of the policy.
Um if I may, um just speaking on behalf of the conservation commission, um Tim was the only member that was interested and able in his schedule to step up. Um so I'm not sure that in him being here, he's gonna be able to provide any more information than what he provided in his letter of interest. Um I will try to see if the chair is able to come. She does have conflicts um as well because she is an agent in another community and has evening meetings as well. Um.
I view this one slightly different only because we're a po- we're a po-.
Yeah, we're Kongkong representative.
We're appointing a representative from an already existing committee for which we appointed. Um and so that's how I view this one a little bit different, but um we'll hold it, please. Um I'm going to, given that it's almost nine o'clock, I would like to see if we can hold the town line welcome sign continued discussion.
I was gonna, I was gonna, cause it's certainly not time sensitive.
Um. Um I know we ha- we've had it and Tamika, I appreciate some of your feedback and everything. Um so.
I know, but it's not time sensitive. We can definitely hold it.
We keep it and just push it to the next meeting. Thank you. Um we have some street sign requests.
We can, I wanna show you that. I have to listen some suggestions.
Yeah, sure. Um we have some under new and special business, we have street sign requests. This is the first time I believe that this board has seen um street sign requests and we have a lot of them. Um so a f- a couple of them are stop signs. Um there's a speed limit sign request, there's a wildlife crossing sign request, and there's a s- slow children um sign request. Um all the information, uh uh the process is there's an application that is filled out by the generally it's a resident or a community member um who is interested in it and then it is signed off or reviewed by uh DPW, uh the police ch- uh chief, fire chief and then us. Um I think sorry, um we, I think we can take them probably just best to take them individually so that that way we have all the information for each one and we're not trying to lump through them. Um the first one that we have on our list is the stop sign at Vista Circle and Cleveland Circle. Um I believe um it says that it was missing, that it's either missing or never installed. Um and the DPW director believes that it was never installed. Um my push, I think it's needed there given the the frequency of um traffic, but I think for planning board um and for us, when we um look at street acceptances, we need to ensure that signage is a huge um box that is checked as well, streets signage, whether it's um stop signs or any other signage. Um this is uh they're already accepted streets, um so there's not anything that can be pushed back on. It is. Um is there any, we have the recommendation from DPW to uh recommend approval. Uh the police chief and fire chief both recommend approval as well.
Um uh has anybody driven by Vista Circle and Cleveland Circle intersection? Has anybody seen any other stop sign in that development? There isn't any.
Right.
If you come out of Vista Circle, turning onto Palmegasset, there's not even a stop sign there. I drove the area, I was in that area for fifteen minutes. Not one car came out of that intersection and we're only three cars in the whole Vista area. So I find putting a stop sign there unless we're willing to do it for the whole development, doesn't make any sense. If you're traveling more than the speed limit on that road at that intersection, you should be cited. Cause there's really not a lot of traffic. Uh I see no need to spend the town's money to put a stop sign there unless we're willing to do the whole Vista Circle. The whole area there. Cause that's one of the minor places that you come out of. That's not one of the major. Doesn't come out onto a major road or anything. So if we were gonna do a stop sign, to me, it should be done at the corner of the the uh development that leads on to uh Palmegasset. There was a sign there at one time, but it got stolen. So we, that one, we should be replaced if anything.
So how does the rest of the board feel? Paul, Jen?
Hmm. I've been in the area myself and I've kinda I've looked it over and I I I do agree with Harry's point of view on it. So you know, it's. I just, there was nobody there and I and I admit there was probably about five minutes there and I didn't see a soul come through there, but that's neither here nor there. I would imagine has to do with the time of day that I was there as opposed to um mornings or something when, you know, people were getting kids up to the end of the street to catch a school bus or what have you. So yeah. You know, there could be an issue with that time of day more than more than other times of day, but.
And I I guess again, I think that if we're going to do a stop sign in those developments, we need to look at stop signs in every road that meets another road there. Not just one. It's not gonna solve the problem.
If I, if I may, I I agree. Um and I don't know if there's plans to have DPW or or police go through and determine if they need stop signs there. Um so uh so I agree with you on that point, Harry, but with a request here, it I'm I'm assuming the request was made because there's concern whether there's kids in the area and people are speeding through that and there's concern that somebody might hit somebody. I'm willing to grant a a stop sign for the request and then decide whether or not, you know, additional stop signs are needed. Living in a in a development that has very similar to that, we do have stop signs and people still speed through our neighborhood and it's it is helpful that they're they're there as as that extra precaution.
Exactly. If you look where that area is, you can see people coming down. They get a clear view right and left.
Mm-hmm.
And they're not gonna stop. They come right out. And I don't think, I live on a street where they use my Beechwood as a cross street. And I've got them coming down near thirty, thirty-five, forty miles an hour. There's a stop sign there. I'll give you one out of twenty cars, never stop. They go right through. So it's not spending money, spending the town's money for one stop sign there isn't gonna solve the problem if people don't have the cognitive ability to say, hey, I gotta stop, I gotta look right and left before I turn. So that's the only reason I don't want. I mean, if we say let's do them all, then we gotta do all the developments, but I don't think there's many developments you go to. You're gonna see stop signs there. Older developments, maybe twenty, thirty years ago, forty years ago, you might see them, but not on the new ones. And I just think you gotta be a smart driver and if you live in a neighborhood like that, you gotta be cautious when you're turning and the stop sign isn't gonna fix that problem.
So I'm hearing that the board is sounds like is not in favor of granting this request? I personally would be, but okay. Paul, what about?
Yeah, I would agree. Well, I I don't see the need for it either.
I mean, I can I look at it and we have a request and it was recommended by the direct, the DPW director and chief Monaco and chief knife. And so we have other requests that were either not recommended by them or not relevant to to their their purview. Um I I hear that it's, it maybe it's a neighborhood thing. I don't know. Um but we have a request for a spot um that every three big department heads that that have access to that area are are recommending.
I'll guarantee you, if every resident that lived on that street or any street puts in a request, both the DPW, the police and the fire are gonna say, yes, we approve it. So where does it stop? They're not gonna say, no, you can't have a stop sign. They're not gonna say that. It's up to the board to decide.
Yeah, if I, if I may, would it make the board feel more comfortable if we sent a memo to the planning board just bringing attention to the fact that for new subdivisions moving forward, specifically when it comes to street acceptance, that it be paid more attention to, that the proper signage is installed before the streets are turned over to the town?
Would this be the developer's job to put in stop signs?
As long as it has not been turned over to the town.
Okay.
I'm.
Yeah, I think that's something.
It's in the plan, right, if it's in the plan and.
Yeah, I think that's something, absolutely, that would take care of some of this, but.
And I guess maybe to piggyback a little bit, Harry, on you, do you have an estimated cost as to what the cost for?
Hundred and sixty dollars approximately per sign to purchase the sign and the equipment to install it.
Ones, one hundred sixty.
Approximately, yeah.
For DPW to purchase it and install it.
Right.
Um.
Now, if the individual wants to install it himself or buy the sign, we can install it.
There's, there's legal.
Mm-hmm.
Run of, I believe there's legal legal specifications for the sign purpose because I remember their conversation in the past about, well, I'll just go purchase the signs and DPW can install them and it's not, um there's, I believe, legal.
Well, I'm saying if the individual wants to make a donation to the town, say, I'll make a donation if you put a sign here. I'll be, you know, that's very legitimate. But so anyways, I I don't, there are some things here that I think are important. I just don't think that one is.
Are you comfortable?
Uh it's not a hill I'm gonna die on, but I would still vote in the affirmative for it.
I would. I I'm.
And I know where where it sounds like we're a split, one way or another, so I'm not gonna.
Right, right, right.
It's again, I would support it, especially given that we have the big three um department head sign offs, but
Yeah. Yeah.
again, it would be split, so.
Yep.
Um I. Would you like to hold it till the next meeting when you have a full board? If it's gonna be a split vote anyways?
As long as we get the notice out to.
I can communicate with the.
To the planning board that in the future.
Mm.
You know, that should be a consideration.
And actually, I would also be curious, if we're gonna hold it, I would also be curious if there's a reason why this subdivision and some of the subdivisions don't have signage at all. Um if it was in the in the plan, if it was designed that way.
That's a good question.
Mm-hmm. Well, I was just gonna say, if we can reach back out to um chief Monaco and and chief knife and just ask if there's only a single one in here, is that, does that change your recommendation or would it really be better suited for the whole neighborhood?
Yeah, it's cause it's possible, maybe they didn't realize that there aren't other stop signs in the subdivisions. Sure, I can I can get some more feedback for the board and then we can bring it back the next time. Is that fair?
Thank you.
And I'll communicate to the resident just to let him know what what's going on.
Yes, that would be good, thank you.
Um so we'll hold that one. Our next one is a stop sign request for Irish Irish Lane and Turkey Hill Road intersection. It's on the back of that um one that we just looked at. Um and I believe um right now it's a yield. Um and there is a request or um director Kalowski has suggested that a stop would be safer. Um and so it receives recommendation from the from all three, uh DPW director, um chief Monaco and chief knife. Um I think that there's been a lot of development out on Irish Lane and Turkey Hill, um that's been seeing some more traffic. Um and that's, I think, a a more frequented intersection.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Uh. And I know there's been concerns.
That that's a tough road.
Speaking on that one.
That's a tough road, cause the road on on Irish Lane comes down, probably about a hundred, two hundred foot where it comes down. I did not see a yield sign when I was there today.
I was gonna say, is there even an actual yield sign there?
I I did not see that. So you come down, the road is right and left. You kinda have to stop there to make sure nothing's coming.
Yeah.
But I can see where a lot of people don't. They come down, they take a quick glance and they shoot right out.
Yep.
But also, Irish Lane is not a paved road for the most part. It's a dirt road, so if you're coming down that road pretty fast and you're coming down the hill, I don't even know if a yield sign would do any good for them there. It's just to let them know. So again, uh I don't know how much effect the stop sign, we could probably put one there. I just don't know what it's gonna do. Cause Irish Lane is not a heavily trafficked road. Turkey Hill may be, but I don't see Irish Lane as heavily traveled on that dirt road coming down there. Because if you go to, um where is it? Right down the street from that is Turkey Turk- uh Turkey Hill comes down and then forks to the right. If you go to the left, that's Kenwood. There is no stop sign there either. So people coming down that road could just take a right or a left without stopping, cause there's nothing they're telling them not to. So it comes down to driver's awareness. And so if you're gonna put a stop sign anywhere, it wouldn't be at Irish, it would be there at Kenwood. I mean, at uh Turkey Hill where it forks to the right and Kenwood goes to the left. That would be where I would do it, cause that's more of a paved and permanent road.
The application we have for us is at the end of Irish connecting to Turkey Hill.
Turkey Hill, right. Drivers don't always stop and there's nothing indicating that they should. Exactly, there isn't. It's one of those situations where we don't have a lot of, we'd have to revamp our whole transportation system for stop signs in this town, rather than just picking this one, picking that one, picking this one. We gotta take a hard look at all the signs that we need. Maybe we get a grant to help us out. I don't know. But it does need to be, but I would I would put that stop sign somewhere else. I'm surprised they didn't say that.
You're saying coming down Turkey Hill and Irish Lane comes in and um.
Right. If you come down, if you're driving on Turkey Hill.
Yep.
Okay, you come to the end.
Yep.
And Turkey Hill goes off like this and then Irish Lane comes down. And Turkey Hill goes off like this, and then Irish Lane comes down here.
I think we're in that we'll hold this one as well and consider looking more holistically at.
Ask, so can I just ask for clarification? Are we gonna hold it or is or is the board of the opinion that stop sign should be looked at holistically and we're not gonna entertain it right now?
I I'm just, and I'm trying, I'm trying to remember actually picturing it cuz it's been a little while since I've been down there, but are we talking about this, this one or this one?
Um.
Probably that one.
Yeah, I think so.
Cuz that looks like it's, that's why I'm like, it should be on Turkey Hill. But it's probably that one. I mean, that to me makes sense to have one there, but I I also don't mind holding it if we need further clarification.
Um, it says on Turkey Hill Road between Glen, Kenwood Drive and Emerald Speed, oh, no wait, sorry, I was looking at that. Sorry, guys, that's the wrong one. Um, so maybe we can hold it and because there's clar, we need clarification on location because um, there's, it looks like there's two spots that Irish and Turkey Hill connect and it seems like it would make more sense on one. Am I going to hold the obvious one? Yes, that's the one that I think that we would be getting.
That's Irish Lane.
Yep.
And it's coming down. It's lots steeper than it shows there.
Yeah, that's true.
That's why, that's the one, like, if you're coming up.
Right, so if you go, if you go to the left on Turkey Hill, you go down about a hundred, two hundred yards and there's another one. Not that way, you'd have to go the other way. And there's another major road, Turkey Hill, that comes out. And it it is a stop there, not a stop sign, but you stop there, then decide, do I take a left on Kenwood or do I keep going on Turkey Hill? But that's basically, I mean, the road's in terrible shape there. So, but the other road's in decent shape where you come out. So I could see where people coming out of the yellow one, they don't stop.
So.
Let me just hold this one for.
So hold it and do we want to hold it to and ask, um, if DPW can take a look more holistically at maybe not neighborhoods that should have stop signs, but roads in town that should have stop signs, especially being mindful of the new development? Or do we just wanna say, hold this one and confirm location? Or do we wanna not entertain it at all right now?
You know, through the chair, I guess my my concern is, number one is, we're not looking at this thing practically, although they've requested, and that is, what's the traffic pattern? How many accidents have been there? What's the priority for putting our stop signs in, for spending the town's money? We don't have any information on that, simply just a request. And I think as this board, if we're gonna spend the town's money, we need to get a little more into the overall design of stop signs in this town.
So is there, is there a consideration or a director from the board for town staff to pursue? Maybe come back with what the cost would be for a comprehensive evaluation of community stop signs and maybe other traffic mitigation measures?
Yeah, if we talk to the fire chief, I mean, the fire, the police chief. What problems admit? What are problems have come from DPW? And he said, they ever had any problems? Like in the wintertime, you're coming down that street, you don't wanna stop, so a stop sign ain't gonna matter if it's frozen. It's not like a normal road. So if we can get some feedback on that, I would love to spend my money, or the town's money, pardon me, not my town's money, judiciously on areas that have an impact in the town and make a difference.
I don't disagree. And also, we have requests from residents that are, that are in a neighborhood or an area that are requesting it. And they go through DPW and Public Safety. Um, and for that one as well, they're all recommended. So, um, you know, I I could say this resident, as well as some of the other residents, could say that's my tax money that I would happily spend. Um, have go towards a stop sign because it's not only us that are using that road. But we we can hold that one.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and not to add more to the either chief's plate, but is, can they add some context to comments if they're recommending it? Why, like, there were X number of accidents there or, you know, something like, they go with the recommendation, just to have some. Cuz I I don't disagree with Harry, but.
I I mean, you know, this, the second one about, you know, witness turtles and birds that have been hit and, you know, Chief Monaco, no relevant to PD, Chief Nipe, no relevant to PD. So I mean, that's something the board has to consider. So, uh, but on the other ones, yeah, why are you, why are you recommending these things? You just have it down recommended.
If we had all the money in the world.
But there's no comments there either.
If we had all the money in the world, yeah, put a stop sign up, but I I don't disagree with with.
I mean, let's look at roads, for example, where there might be kids crossing. There's no stop sign. That's where we need to spend our money.
Something, and just throw it out there as a possibility for a tool for the board. Four or five years ago, a town meeting authorized spending for some signage, um, for East County and Wachusett. Maybe that's a funding source for future sign or this study that you wanna do, Harry. Um, repurposing that article for these initiatives, but just, I mean, just a comment, I think, you know, some of these subdivisions, um, or any other aspects of the town, I think this is, you're gonna get a lot more of these requests as the town grows from being a rural community to, you know, dare I say, a little bit more suburban. Um, and you're packing in a lot of these subdivisions and houses, you're getting a lot more traffic and visitors and just overall activity. So, um, I don't think this is gonna be the end. I think we're gonna get a lot more. So something just for the board to consider for future discussions is, you know, just because we say the board is not considering these doesn't mean we won't stop getting these, so.
And if we do get more and we have the facts to back it up and the information to back it up, makes a lot easier, but, you know, if if.
I just also wanna say, Harry, I mean, the, just the cost of some of the data that you're probably gonna be looking for, it's probably gonna cost a lot more than the hundred and sixty dollars for a stop sign. You know, you're thinking of, um, especially if you're looking for traffic counts, activities, crash data, some, just some of the time of staff being spent on this. If that comes back and says, you should put a stop sign, maybe we should have just not spent that staff time and those resources and put the stop sign there. So I think there's just, you gotta weigh that and see what makes sense, especially as the town and and these, um, subdivisions continue to go up.
But I I do like the idea that if the, if the subdivisions going forward can be required to put their own stop signs in on their streets. I mean, if you drive through Vista, it's not a big deal, but again, you can probably put ten, fifteen stop signs there very easily. And that's just one development.
But I know the planning board has recently updated their subdivision rules and regs. I'm not just aware of the details if there is requirements in the rules and regs existing or within the new modifications for, um, traffic signs. I don't know if there's anything in there.
It's not in the new changes that they did, but I can't say whether or not it's existing.
Yeah, so I would also, maybe that's some homework for the board to evaluate those and see what makes sense. If there is an issue with enforcement, obviously, we can work with, um, planning department, planning board, and then other relevant departments as well. Also, just, I just, you know, before we put something on any warrant for a future acceptance, making sure that everything is met what was initially applied for, um, and required by the town.
I'm just concerned that, not that cost is much, but how many developments do we have in this town that don't have stop signs at all? I mean, you're, you could be talking five, six, seven hundred areas where you could put stop signs on. If you go across the street to Lenny's place, Lenny's across from Vista, you know, down the road, there's no stop signs there. You know, Ten Rod Road, you go through that area, you got some, you know, but there's nothing there. I mean, you can't, you don't even have to abide by the stop sign there. Although it's good driving to do that, you wanna, particularly if there's kids walking on the street. And where there's no streets, there's no sidewalks. That's the other thing, you know, you, so.
I think we've got.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, we have a speed limit sign request for Kenwood Drive and Emerald Road. Um, because, uh, they say that there are frequent speeders in area where residents work. Um, the DPW Director Kloski, uh, recommended but said, asked Nick to please advise on what the posted speed is. Um, Chief Monaco actually does not recommend and, uh, Chief Nipe says it's not relevant to the fire department. Um, I know generally, in the past, um, it's been with the smaller, um, smaller streets, not posting speed limit signs. Um, partially because it's not so much the cost of the sign itself, but it's the the upkeep and maintenance of them and the design of the roads are such that people shouldn't be able to go that fast. Um, but.
And we, if I may, um, Chief Monaco did provide additional feedback on this, explaining why he did not recommend the speed limit signs. Um, in particular.
Well, he just said for for now, he's he's doing his inventory. That project that he wants to complete before we do any decisions on that, so that's.
Yeah, I drove that, I drove that area. And it's very sparse for houses and I'm trying to figure out where they're talking about. I mean, it's basically all wooded road going through there between Kenwood and Emerald. So do they want it at ninety-seven Turkey Hill Road? Do they want it at three hundred Turkey? Where would you put this thing? And that road is narrow there anyways. Um, I I would not wanna be on that road when two cars going fifty-five miles an hour are gonna be and should be doing it anyway. So I I'm not sure. I know it's not recommended and I guess I agree with this at this point, until we can define where the problem really is.
So I think, um, we, I mean, Chief Monaco is asking that the town defer any, and it, this sounds like it's similar kind of to the stop sign discussion. Um, any speed limit requests until the project is complete, the project being, um, uh, some, um, conduct an engineering speed study and submit that with relevant data to, um, DOT. And then DOT could review and help us set special speed regulations throughout town. Um, and maybe that would be lumped in with the stop signs as well. So.
Question, if I may. When was the last time this was updated?
So it's it's funny you mention that. Um, this is actually on our list of, um, the board's forty-two policies. And Austin and I were actually unable to locate the actual policy, if only the application exists. So I've actually started working on a new draft policy and application to bring to the board so that this can become a more updated and streamlined process. Um, I've also worked with Lynn and we have added this at the request of the department heads involved. We have added this to our viewpoint permitting system, um, to make it a more efficient process than just emailing the form back and forth amongst the departments. And it'll also give them an opportunity to provide comments that I can then relay to the board. So we're working on this one behind the scenes.
That's great, cuz I get a feeling like it's, hey, town, I got speeders in my street, put a sign. Doesn't tell me anything, doesn't give me the warm and fuzzy, so.
So do we want to make a motion to, um, not recommend, right, to disapprove? Or do we want to just hold it? Pending, cuz it's this particular application.
If I make make a recommendation, at this point, I would just deny it.
Of deny it, I would say.
Yeah, because to to hold it, I'm just not sure when we would bring it back, depending on how the chief's project progresses. And then that, I can communicate to the, to the person that requested what's kinda going on behind the scenes. So she has an understanding that it wasn't just a blanket, no, there's more going on.
So then I would entertain a motion to disapprove the, um, speed limit sign request for Kenwood Drive and Emerald at, uh, Turkey Hill Road between Kenwood and Emerald.
Second, also moved.
Motion, is there a second? Second, second, to disapprove. Any conversation? Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Mattson, I.
Lender, I.
Whitman, I.
Um, following along Turkey Hill Road, there is a request for a wildlife crossing sign. Um, uh, Turkey Hill Road before and after, I assume on either side of Sucker Brook. Um, applicant has stated that they've witnessed turtles and birds that have been hit and there's a lot of wildlife in this area. Um, this is not an uncommon sign in wildlife protection area or wildlife areas, but, um, DPW Director Kloski does not recommend, um, because of concerns of vandalism and stuff. Um, Chief Monaco and Chief Nipe do not feel it's relevant to their departments. So based on kind of the ongoing conversation, I am sensing the board is of the disapprove mindset. So, um, I would entertain a motion.
Uh, yeah, I I I make a motion to disapprove the street sign request uh, regarding, um, wildlife, that's correct, wildlife crossing sign at Turkey Hill Road in the area before and after Sucker Brook.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second motion.
Conversation. Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Mattson, I.
Lender, I.
Whitman, I. Um, and the final one is a slow children sign, um, request for Ridge Road near Three Ridge Road. Um, there are, um, toddlers, um, and children that play in that area. There's been a lot of close calls with people speeding in each direction. Um, this is recommended by Director, DPW Director Chris Kloski, as well as Chief Monaco. Um, and, uh, Chief Nipe reviewed it but did not make any comments or notes. Um, conversation, again, I'm sensing that this is gonna be a, a no based on the sign conversations we've had. Um, I will s-
Actually, I'm for this one.
I will say Ridge Road is in terrible, terrible shape. Um, and it's getting worse and worse and worse. Um,
So just for clarification, cuz I happen to speak to the person who requested this, I believe they're looking for it to be at the beginning of Ridge Road as you turn onto Ridge Road and are heading.
From Wachusett Street.
From Wachusett Street, yes, yep, cuz that's, that's Three Ridge Road right there.
Right.
Yeah. So to play devil's advocate, does that mean we put one of these up in every neighborhood where there's kids? Or near every house that there's kids? I I mean, I'm playing devil's advocate. Yeah, I, I, I'm a parent. I have kids. They ride their bikes and they walk in the street. But there's, if we don't put a sign up, I know there's other, I've seen, you know, you've seen those little guys that people stick out by their driveways.
This moment.
Yeah, you know, there's things that, you know, residents can purchase if they have a concern for their particular, you know, home area. But I just, you know, like you said, playing devil's advocate again, unless we're putting one of these in every single neighborhood where there's kids, I. And and to be perfectly honest, are are they even looked at? People are still gonna continue.
And, ooh, I wanna say, if I remember correctly, there's no stop sign there either.
So I suppose I'm looking for a motion to disapprove the, um, slow children or children on place sign at Three Ridge Road.
I understand the ask, I just, I don't know.
I do too, but I feel like it's, there's, even in more tightly settled areas, there are. But I'll take a motion over the board.
Um, what's the word I used?
Disapprove.
Disapprove? I'll make a motion to disapprove the, uh, request for a, a, uh, slow children sign, uh, in the area of Three Ridge Road.
Second motion.
The motion and a second. Is there conversation? Roll call, Harry.
Um, second, I.
Mattson, I.
Lander, I.
Whitman, I. All right, guys, we made it through that. Um, code team. Um, we, just to confirm, we put the stop signs on hold, asking for a follow up with that. Do we want to go back and just disapprove those as well and blanket disapprove rather than carry them along? Um,
I think that's fair.
Just that way, it takes something off the plate of having to be mindful that it still needs to be looked at again.
Absolutely.
And then they can come back because we've asked if it can be done more holistically.
Yep, I'll keep that on our radar.
All right, so then I would, sorry, go back if the board is remenable.
What would be nice is if we get one of these and it's signed off by more than just one person. People in the neighborhood, like at that intersection. You have a house here, a house here, a house here. If it's really a problem, then you should have your neighbors sign off on something like this too. Not just one person. But, I mean, we're not, it's not set up for that right now, but.
Um, so I think we have two motions there, or two that there's, I would entertain a motion to disapprove the stop sign request for Vista Circle and Cleveland Circle intersection.
You could probably take it all together.
And just do all of them.
As in, take them both, then disallow, uh, or disapprove the stop sign request for both Vista Circle and Cleveland Circle intersection as well as Irish Lane and Turkey Hill Road intersections.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second motion.
Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Mattson, I.
Lander, I.
Whitman, I. Thank you. Um, special for town meeting timeline. And is looking and I don't see it.
Yep uh so this is just I think I wanted to have this discussion with the board um I think in previous years there was um a necessity to have special town meeting for various reasons whether it's acceptance of um general laws budget modifications uh free cash spending requests um street acceptances things like that um so just wanna have a candid discussion to see if the board um is looking to have um a special fall town meeting per the new um an accepted bylaws and approved by the attorney general's office it's the third um Thursday of November or any other date um that the board deems appropriate um if there are um if there is a willingness from the board to call a special town meeting um we have some dates in mind the third Thursday I think would be the twenty-first um and then obviously whatever your desired timeline for opening the warrant how long you wanna keep the warrant open things like that um there's not any language in your bylaw that requires any extensive language I know picks in previous years you would have the warrant open for a pretty long time about a month or so um I think there's certainly some articles that the town could come up with um I know our treasurer collector's office has some general laws that um they're looking to accept I'm sure if we solicited some article ideas for um from some other departments um obviously if you can o- open the warrant you open up the opportunity for citizens petitions as well um at in some discussions with town departments um I think the only reason why we would have a special fall town meeting is is to do a budget modification there's some things uh that were um kind of unanticipated as we went through the FY twenty-five budget process um and one of the biggest ones is this board um expanded the regional dispatch operation um which has modified the budget but also has um realized some revenue for the town um that is the only thing that I think would require us to have a special town meeting um is to modify the budget recognize some new growth um that has been made available through the assessors um aggressive approach we have a couple other things so for example the co- uh the um invoices that have come in from our um trash hauler um are higher than anticipated so we I think we'll need to modify the budget there um I think in talking with the town accountant there's ways that we can be creative and maybe not necessarily go to have to have to go to town meeting for that um but again it's the world of board if you wanna call a special town meeting as was done in the past this is an opportunity to have that discussion and then we can create a timeline based upon your set date.
I guess personally I'm reluctant to have a special town meeting cause we don't get a lot of people there uh and if we can and I and and sometimes I I hate to ask people and say okay look here's another thing we gotta correct come on please show up and vote on it and it's like can't we deal with it without asking our citizens not to try to avoid that process of government but to give them a break on it cause we have two meetings here anyways you know November and May so.
But I think.
But I think this is if this the question is if we are interested in having the November meeting period
That's right.
Right.
Oh.
Yeah. um not last year we had that third extra one in I believe February for the bylaws
Mm-hmm.
but this is if there's value to having it in um in November in the past it's kind of been where we view utilize certified free cashed make whole the budget that we made significant cuts to previously
Mm-hmm.
so in some ways a budget modification but it was more to um try to make whole the the people who had things cut um significantly um.
I was under the impression we were gonna hold the November meeting uh town meeting anyways I didn't you know so.
Yeah I know it's been I think that's been the standard practice is you have it
Yeah.
see what comes but candidly my
Okay.
sentiment is if there's no business
Right.
before the town why spend the resources on having a town meeting.
Yeah.
Not just for two or three articles yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I agree.
So I think I mean I think that there are some articles that could be there Austin to your point if the board was amenable to it but there would probably be some pushback that it shouldn't be done at a special and should be done at an annual um s- so I'm not sure I don't my only consideration is I'm not sure where um planning board is with some of the zoning stuff again I think some of the pushback is that it the even those should be done at an annual and not a a special as well so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah so I know some of the there's a couple of um zoning amendments at the planning board um I think was anticipating on including on the the special town meeting in the fall talking with the town planner um doesn't seem like there's an urgency necessarily for those um amendments and they could to your point Madam Chair I think would be better suited anyways maybe for an annual.
Mm-hmm. They were more housekeeping bylaws than significant.
Yeah except for that one energy storage one that that's a big one.
This energy storage bylaw yeah.
I know that they're working on another one but I don't think it would be ready for the fall anyway
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
um but I just um I and I know that there some of the other boards and commissions are are working on some
Mm-hmm.
some stuff but again I think the pushback might be that those should be done at um an annual meeting as well
Mm-hmm.
um we will have a big obviously presidential election in the beginning of November
Yeah.
um that people are going to be significantly invested in
Right.
and I hope that people do the 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 homework on all of ballot questions I believe there will be a number of ballot questions um CPA for town for sure but a number of other state related ballot questions so I really would feel
Yeah.
more comfortable encouraging people to do their homework and research and resources
Mm-hmm.
um at that than push it just for the sake of saying that we have it we don't need to make a decision tonight
Yeah.
um but to get it on everybody's.
Yeah certainly I just maybe would reserve the opportunity if 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 it's looking like we may actually need the budget modification I definitely will come to the board and ask if there's a an opportu- or a willingness to to call a special town meeting I would imagine that maybe we could do a condensed schedule in terms of keeping the warrant open I know
Mm-hmm.
for example the town of Robertson just had a special town meeting they had the um warrant open for one day um just to be able to get the two articles necessary um and to uh have the article uh have the town meeting um and not have you know forty-five articles
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
um but for right now I think just in talking with um the finance team it doesn't necessarily look like we need to do that budget plot right now.
Okay thank you um then just for the public's information our next board meetings would be um uh Monday September sixteenth and Monday September thirtieth um and then into October we go and October fifteenth and October twenty-ninth um we have a couple executive sessions so um I believe we need to return to open session um after um so I but I wanted to get that out cause I don't know how many people are gonna sit around um execution um so I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session for purpose number two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel subject to finance director slash town accountant and for reason number six to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of public body subject to atomic trail assessors map ID thirty-five ash parcel E one to return to open session.
So moved.
Okay so moved by Jen is there a second?
Second.
By Paul roll call Harry.
Second I.
Matson I.
Ledger I.
White man I.
Ten thirty-nine PM still on Wednesday September fourth um I would uh entertain a motion to execute and sign an employme- employment agreement as discussed between the town of Retland and Donna Kutcher as finance director town accountant.
You made a motion?
I am accepting a motion.
Oh so moved.
Second.
Is there a second any conversation roll call Harry.
Second I.
Matson I.
Ledger I white man I thank you all um welcome Donna and we I would accept a motion to is there any other business hearing none I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second roll call.
Second I.
Matson I.
Ledger I. White man I uh ten forty.